Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. The Sacramento City Council 5:00 PM meeting. Please call and roll.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. Councilmember Dickinson. Vice Mayor Talamontes. Councilmember Plekibom. Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Mayor Potem Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor McCarty.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan, can you leave us on the pledge and land acknowledgement?
Absolutely. If you're able, please stand. As we honor Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands, to the original people of this land, the Nisanon people, the Southern Mido, the Valley and Plains Miwok, the Putwin-Win Tu peoples, and the people of Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' histories, contributions, and lives. Please remain standing for the pledge. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, unindomitable, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So Mayor, you have two special presentations. The first one is Bike Month, presented by Mayor Potem Gata.
Thank you. Councilmember Garrett?
Thank you, Mayor. It's exciting today to start our meeting by recognizing May is Bike Month. And yes, a big round of applause for May is Bike Month, everybody. (applause). And then to the podium here real quick, our amazing city staff from Public Works, Matt Ironman, Lucinda Wilcox, Megan Carter, Philly Avalos, JD Double Jennifer Donald Wyatt, for those who know, Jeff Jelzma, Jess Gothin, and Graham De Leon. And they will combine those two. And then our amazing team at Saba. So let's bring in Saba as well. I want to bring up our Executive Director Deb Banks, and then Jeremy Rohr, Rob Michael, Jim, and also Jive. Let's bring up Jive also from the North Natomas and Natomas area. Michelle is out here today as well. And then the Sacramento TMA, Dalia Ramirez Robles, who also an alumni of District Six as well here, the District Six team as well, here celebrating May is Bike Month. And we do this every, like every day is, should be, and every month should be a Bike Month, but May particularly, we do it a time where our Public Works teams, our city teams, our safety people, our community advocates, all come together to talk about the, not only the health benefits of biking, the improvements, the need for our air quality, and also the important safety measures that we're asking everyone, not only pedestrians, not only drivers, including cyclists, all to be cautious about cyclists on the roadway. Now, just this month, they've logged over 2,824 riders from the region here for the May is Bike Month effort. And this is a six-county region as well that gets involved with it. Our neighboring counties partner with this. Just in here, in our county here, in our region, 297,000 miles, offsetting 360,000 pounds of carbon. Those are 23,000 trips. And we welcome new riders, 338 new riders. And I'm not, I wouldn't say, yes, let's get a big round of applause for 338 new riders.[236.12][236.12](applause). You know, at least my waistline doesn't say that, but I would say, but I'm a bike rider. And a lot of us enjoyed riding our bikes. And sometimes, you know, we complain about, remember the day when our kids used to ride our bikes to school and everybody rode their bikes to school? Well, we can't do that anymore if not everybody takes the conscious effort to think about cyclists on the road, okay? We need to all work together to improve that. And the people that are doing that are Saba, Jive, the Sacramento, the Highway 50 Transportation Management Associations here, and our amazing Public Works staff. So to talk about May is Bike Month, let's bring up, and to receive the resolution of May is Bike Month, Executive Director from Saba, Deb Banks, everybody. Big round of applause.
Hey. Thanks. Eric, you told everything I was gonna say. So we'll keep it short because we know you guys have had a really long day, and it looks like you're gonna have a long evening as well. I just want to talk about May is Bike Month for just a little bit. It's been going on for over 20 years, and it's been a campaign to encourage more people to ride their bike. Secog used to manage May is Bike Month, and back in the day, it was a contest to see how many miles participants could ride during May. We had people that would get up at midnight, get out their door, and ride a century on May 1st. Now, I know Laney does those kinds of things still, but I have hung up that get up at the middle of the night and ride my bike all night long kind of days. That's an amazing thing. But when Saba took over May is Bike Month from Secog, what we really wanted to do was focus on new riders. We want more people to choose their bike. We want that behavior change. So we made the shift to go from as many miles as you could ride to how many people could we get to take a short trip around town. As we all know, and we all parrot, bicycle rides are daily, our daily car trips can be up to five miles in length, something that's easily done by bicycle. And we think that if we can get that behavior change, then we're gonna do great things for the environment, great things for congestion, great things for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and of course, good things for wellness, both physical and mental health. So that's the whole purpose of this. We put on events in all six counties, the majority of them are here in Sacramento. Saba alone has over 70 events happening during the course of the May, and then add on 50-quarter TMA and SAC TMA that put on a ton of events, Jive puts on a ton of events, the city puts on events. I mean, there are options on our calendar every single day in May to get out and ride your bike, and that's the whole idea. Just trying to do a little behavior change, but it takes a whole village and city to kind of make it happen, and that's what we're all about. You've talked about the stats, Eric, and that's fantastic. We have over 600 workplaces engaged. We have 12,000 people riding their bikes. We've got tons of new riders. And we have, since we started this campaign four years ago, clocked over nine million miles. And at the beginning of May, we did a thing, and I was like, 10 million miles? We want a million miles in May. That would get us over that threshold. I'm not sure we're gonna make it, but we're gonna keep trying, and we're having a great time while we're doing it anyway. That is a lot of people riding their bikes. And what that means is that we're gonna help meet our climate goals, and we're gonna help push you guys for better infrastructure, because the more people that are riding the bikes, their bikes, the better our streets are gonna be, and we're gonna help make them safer. May is 31 days of bike love. Happy May is Bike Month. Thanks.[468.68][468.68](applause).
Do you have other speakers? With that, I am going to go at the speed of light, because we have a very long meeting ahead of us, but I just couldn't miss the opportunity to also say, one, May is Bike Month, but two, thank you so much for your advocacy, and thank you to our incredible Public Works team, because it should go in tandem that if we want, tandem, huh, pun intended, that if we want more people to ride their bikes, we have to make Sacramento safer for people to ride their bikes.
Yes.
And you all have been a part of that and continue to be, so thank you.
Thank you.
So you can participate on May is Bike Month and register where, Deb?
At the mayusbikemonth.com website. We have, I was gonna say, at the QR code.[513.54][513.54](laughter). Help anybody. The mayusbikemonth.com website will take you to Love to Ride SAC Region, and easy to sign up from there.
And look for Saba, because you can get the annual free socks of May is Bike Month.
And hats.[526.16][526.16](laughter). And I spend January and February fundraising for all the swag, so wear it in good health, as my father would say.
Well, join us all for a quick photo here for May is Bike Month, and then we encourage everyone to ride.
Yeah, ride on. Ride on.
So I'll take the opportunity so we can move things along. As Councilmember Maple said, I think we should do things in tandem, so I will use that, because this is the perfect pun night, because I'd like to call the Director of Public Works and his staff up, because we are recognizing National Public Works Week from May 18th through the 24th. You know, our Public Works is comprised of dedicated 760 men and women, which is the second-largest division in our city. They manage almost everything we see in the city, including buildings, streets, lights, signs, trees, bridges, fleet parking, and more, with a priority to historically underserved communities. Fun fact, I hope I'm not stealing this from you, Mr. Ironman, but that Sacramento's 3,100 street lane miles that Public Works maintains cover a distance roughly equivalent of traveling from Sacramento to New York City. For our Transportation and Engineering Division, they have truly moved the city forward through implementation of Vision Zero Traffic Safety Plan, the Downtown Mobility Project, and the Envision Broadway Project. Our parking and engineering services have kept businesses up and running during the pandemic through our Fresco Dining Program, which has turned into a hugely popular post-pandemic amenity, which I hope everybody enjoys, because I do. Our Facilities Division keeps our critical infrastructure safe through maintaining over 400 buildings and real estate holdings. Our Fleets Division are working daily to find innovative ways to meet Council's directive of creating low-carbon fleet, including the introduction of the first all-electric pickup trucks and the city's first full-sized all-electric garbage truck. Our Street Maintenance Division are responsible for keeping our roads, sidewalks, bridges, and canopy of over 100,000 public trees safe and functioning properly. And our Recycling and Solid Waste Division manages approximately 250,000 tons of waste, including garbage, recycled material, green waste, and organic food waste. We all know how much Public Works has stepped it up, and I know what I experienced in District One when we had a couple fatalities in a small amount of time, how much you guys stepped up to try and find solutions in the community, and you have done that everywhere in our city, which makes you guys special, because you work day in and day out to keep our citizens safe, our roads working. And everything else that we take for granted that just keeps working, you guys make it happen. So as we recognize Public Works Week, I want to call out and recognize a couple special individuals who have deserved, much deserved, recognition. Congratulations to Lucinda Wilcox, our Assistant Director,[821.87][821.87](applause), American Public Works Association Manager of the Year. Congratulations.[832.00][832.00](applause). Cicely Garnett, the City Support Services Manager,[841.01][841.01](applause), also named American Public Works Association Manager of the Year. Congratulations.[851.51][851.51](applause). And Allison Kerstetter, who was named a finalist for the 2025 Public Sector Fleet Manager of the Year. You guys truly go above and beyond, each one of you. Congratulations.[867.43][867.43](applause). I'll hand it over to their director. It wouldn't be me if I didn't call out. We need to do more. There's over $1.5 billion in deferred maintenance to make sure that our roads are safe for not only us, but our bikes and everywhere else that I hope we can find a solution to. So Mr. Ironman?
Well, thank you for that, and thank you all for your ongoing support of Public Works. I am actually the luckiest employee with the City of Sacramento, as you can see by my presence of my coworkers here that do the work day in and day out, and I try to keep it all together and orchestrate it. So it's my pleasure in joining you and celebrating National Public Works Week, a time to recognize the essential services that keep our city running, whether it's paving streets, managing parking, collecting waste, maintaining city facilities, fleet vehicles, operating traffic signals, or building safer, more accessible neighborhoods. Our work matters, and it's made all possible by the incredible team of 776 Public Works professionals across eight critical divisions. To each and every one of them, thank you. Your dedication, day in and day out, reflects the very best of public service. You make Sacramento cleaner, safer, more connected, and more equitable for everyone who lives, works, and travels here. This year, our department was honored as Partner of the Year by Midtown Association. And really, what that says to me is that we are connecting with our communities, and we are making sure that we're here to help them and support them, and not regulate them. And so I appreciate them recognizing that and taking the time to let all of our employees know that. I too would like to celebrate our employees, Cicely, Lucinda, and Allison, for the hard work that they do, and, you know, make sure people understand that they are working behind the scenes, making sure that each and every day, our roads and our infrastructure is there for their using. So I appreciate you sponsoring this, Councilmember Kaplan. Thank you very much, all of you, for your support.
Love to call you up, Mayor. Would you mind joining me down here, and we can take one big group picture?
While they're going down, Mayor, I just, you know, as a former engineer here, recovering engineer, it true, I'm glad to see all of our great Public Works folks here, because they truly work for the public. And while some are in the trees, they know where the rubber meets the road.[1050.58][1050.58](crowd cheering). And they don't talk trash, but they do know trash talk.[1057.42][1057.42](laughter).
Sorry, everyone. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you, everyone.[1093.38][1093.38](applause).
So Mayor, staff has asked that we reorder the agenda and take Item 20 from the discussion calendar, which is City Manager Executive Recruitment Process and Development of Facilitated Goals-Based Review Process for Appointed Officers that directly report to this council. So with your approval, may we take that one next?
Yes, correct.
And I have no public comment on this item.
I'll take that item. Thank you for being here today. We are here today to approve the marketing materials and hear about the recruitment process for the next city manager for the City of Sacramento. I am thankful to my colleagues and their work on this issue, as well as their commitment to providing our staff and our consultant, Pam Derby, from CPS HR with the needed input to arrive at this point within the process. I want to express to Pam, Shelley, Ebony, Jennifer, Mindy, Brett, and Lynette, our sincere appreciation for your hard work and flexibility in this process. I know it has not been easy trying to figure out the logistics for the many community meetings, the surveys, and the outreach efforts that were made, but you made it all possible in every single avenue of our work. Today, we will hear from Pam Derby, the findings of the community outreach to date, how that has folded into the recruitment materials, along with the input from the Mayor and the council. This will include a discussion on total compensation. Pam will lead us through the development of the marketing materials and what the next steps are in the process. Then Jennifer Wilkerson will briefly discuss the requested information related to the salary ranges within the city manager and the assistant city managers. Finally, after both Pam and Jennifer, Shelley Banks-Robinson will discuss the request for the direction from the council for the P and PE Committee to develop a facilitated goals-based review process for those six positions that report directly to the Mayor and the City Council as a body. Traditionally, the Mayor and Council have not had a clearly defined review process for our direct reports. While progress has been made in the last year under Councilwoman Kaplan's leadership, it is clear that we, as an employer, need to clearly define our collective review process. We need to agree on what is to expect from our six direct reports to achieve each year, and what will be evaluated on, and how the process will be undertaken. This is a fairly significant undertaking, and the proposal is to hire an HR firm to help facilitate these goals-based on review process. This process will align with our goal-setting workshop scheduled for this fall and focus on how we set goals and review our direct reports. The proposed review process enables the council to clearly articulate what we want in our direct reports to accomplish on behalf of our constituents. I am requesting that my colleagues direct staff to work with the P and PE Committee and involve our direct reports to come back to the Mayor and City Council with a proposed process with the goal to have this in place before the hiring of the next city manager. I am pleased at this time to bring up Pam Derby to start this discussion. Following Pam will be Jennifer Wilkerson for a very brief discussion on the salary ranges for the city manager and the assistant city managers. After the council is done discussing the city manager recruitment and giving direction to begin the formal recruitment, Shelley Banks-Robinson will come up to give an overview of the facilitated goals-based review process. I introduce to you Pam Derby.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Nice to see you all again. As Councilmember Jennings mentioned, tonight I want to give you a wrap-up of where we are to this point in the city manager recruitment process. So the things we're gonna be talking about are what we've done regarding stakeholder engagement. As you know, that we did extend the timeline a bit so that we could do more stakeholder engagement. We have provided you with a draft recruitment brochure. We have provided you with an updated recruitment timeline, and we've also provided you with what are the terms that candidates may be looking for in a total compensation package. So the community and stakeholder engagement happened over about 12 days, from the 19th of April to the 29th of April, 10 days. We did teleconferences with several organizations, CBOs, NGOs, et cetera, that had been, across a diverse section of the community, that had been recommended by council members. Those were Zoom meetings with all of those organizations. There was 12 to 13, as I mentioned. We did in-person community engagement meetings, four in total, one in Oak Park, one in Medevue, one in North Natomas, and one in North Sacramento. We also did two virtual meetings that were advertised for people to participate in. In addition to that, we deployed an online survey. That survey was in English, Vietnamese, Cantonese, and Spanish. It was during the P and PE meeting, it was expressed that some people may not have had the opportunity to participate in the online survey, so we did leave that open until the end of the day last Friday. Because of that, we have only had the opportunity to do some high-level analysis. However, I would say that what we have seen, we had over 400 responses, and what we've seen is that most of the feedback mirrors what we had already heard in the engagement The recruitment brochure that we created is, the ideal candidate profile that you see was created specifically from those conversations with the council, with the community engagement activities, with those organizations we spoke with, and it identified several high-level areas, a bold unifying leader, a strategic thinker and operational expert, authentic, accessible, and community-centered, politically astute but fiercely independent, and also equity-focused and culturally competent. So those are the high-level things, and there is a description of all of those things to let candidates, prospective candidates, know what you're truly looking for in the next city manager. We have updated the original timeline, again, because we did so much stakeholder engagement, and so our anticipation is that after we present today, that we will be able to launch this recruitment next week, and then it would close on June 30th at the end of the month. Then for the next month, in July, you would be doing selection activities involving the council, interviewing candidates, and then we anticipate from mid, early to mid-August, we would be doing final steps, which is negotiation of the contract, background, reference checks, et cetera. We were asked about total compensation package and negotiation terms. We don't have this broken down in what the numbers may be for some of these items. It's gonna depend on the candidate, where they come from, what their current employment agreement may look like, et cetera. You have approved a salary range of $273,311 to $420,684. All charter officers, I believe department heads as well, receive a car allowance of $500 per month. But things that the candidate would be looking for would be term of the employment agreement, or would this just be a no-term employment agreement, which with city managers, they are at-will, and so oftentimes, that's what's decided. Oftentimes, they ask for extra deferred compensation. Leave allowances, oftentimes, they're looking to bring to accrue either at the top or what their current years of service have been. So that's a very typical ask. Some have an executive health and wellness portion, which means that they have to have, and usually, this is decided by the city, that you want them to have a complete physical every year. They'll also be looking for a severance clause for no-cause separation. Other things that they'll talk about, performance evaluations, and that's something you're gonna be talking about with Shelley later on this evening. We believe they're very important, and that's how, should be tied to any raises, salary increases that they receive. Relocation expenses, health coverages, life AD&amp;D insurance, technology stipends, annual subscriptions and memberships, and conference attendance. Those are usually all the things that you're looking for in a total compensation package, and things that I would anticipate. We have already listed what is standard in the city right now, but candidates can always, this is a negotiable situation. And with that, I would ask for questions, comments.
Okay. I think none? Public comment?
I have no speakers for public comment on this item.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Hi, Pam. I'm just looking at the recruitment brochure, and I think it captures what we're looking for quite well generally. The one thing that caught my eye with a little hesitation was the paragraph, politically astute but fiercely independent, strong-willed. You know, above that, you talk about building relationships, and essentially, I don't, I didn't notice you used the word collaborative, but you described that, but obviously, or maybe it's not obvious to everyone, we do want someone, I believe, who's independent, and... and has a strong sense of purpose, but the way this is phrased made me think, gee whiz, you know, we're looking for someone who says, "I don't really care what you think. I know what I want and what I'm going to do, no matter what else." But it also struck me as being arguably internally inconsistent. So I don't have a suggestion for it, other than maybe you want to...
People wordsmith.
People, and I'm not going to wordsmith, I'm just going to suggest you might want to wordsmith.
I will.
Yeah. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. We have two public comment individuals.
Thank you. Dow Vang and Cal Yee Tao.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and City Council members. On behalf of the Sacramento Racial Equity Alliance and Council, we are ready to express our deep commitment to ensuring that the racial equity is centered in the hiring of the Sacramento's next city manager. The city manager plays a critical role in shaping Sacramento's future. It is essential that the person selected for this role brings not only a strong understanding of racial equity and theory, but a proven track record of putting into practice. This is key in continuing to work with the REAC through the score process and fulfilling the commitments made in the racial equity resolution. Racial equity must be a non-negotiable qualification. Every policy, initiative, and budget decision made by this person will impact our communities, and we need a city manager who will lead with a racial equity framework that results in real, measurable outcomes. We're also concerned about the hiring process. True collaboration means engaging the community, not just seeking input, but sharing power. While we understand that this process may be too far along to fully correct, we urge you to embed racial equity and a willingness to co-govern with the community into the final job description. The evaluation criteria and how you promote this position to also attract equity-focused leaders. Racial equity isn't only about addressing past harm, it's also about creating a Sacramento where everyone thrives, especially those historically excluded from opportunity. Where we invest in equity, we build a stronger city for all. We believe you share this vision, and we offer our support and involvement. Any questions or shipping criteria that will ensure racial equity remains at the center of this process? Thank you.
Cal Yee Tao.
Good long evening, City Council and Mayor. My name is Cal Yee Tao, Director of Policy and Partnerships with Long Innovating Politics, and I just want to plus one everything that Dow just shared. Dow was just reading a letter that the Racial Equity Alliance, a body of social justice and racial equity leaders in Sacramento have put together and have sent over to our entire city council and mayor, really to affirm how important it is to consider candidates that really have a demonstrated commitment to improving outcomes for all of our community members. And so this quality is so important, and I just want to make sure and put it on record today that we really prioritize that in our selection process. I want to uplift the leadership in the PNP committee. Thank you so much, Councilmember Jennings. The Racial Equity Alliance, we had flagged the deadline of the survey, that we needed to extend the deadline to include more voices, and the PNP committee heard that, listened to it, and took action, and so we appreciate that the city is listening on such an important process as hiring the city manager. So we thank you all for your efforts, and thank you, and we look forward to our continued collaboration together.
Thank you. Back to you, Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Did you want to, I'm sorry, Councilmember Vang wanted to speak first.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, first, sorry, I should have queued up quicker, so I appreciate you recognizing that. Just really first, wanted to take this moment to thank Councilmember Jennings for his leadership on the PNP committee, working with city staff. And Pam, thank you so much for all of your work, being out in the community. Just want to give a shout-out to Lynette in particular for all the outreach that they've done. I also want to acknowledge that city staff and the chair of PNP and Pam also, you know, what they also did was extended the survey as well, so that if community members didn't get to comment on the survey, there was an opportunity to do that. And I do just want to name that in the outreach material, I see that there's actually a section that calls out a city manager that is equity-focused and culturally competent, and I want to say thank you for that, because as I've shared, mayor and council comes and go, and I often think, you know, if a city manager, I know their job is to report to the mayor and council, to do the will of five council members if the majority says do something, but I also want the city manager to have the independence of that if we pass a policy or a budget, a budget or a policy or initiative that actually harms communities of color, that they are able to implement the policy in a way that mitigates that harm. And so that's really important for me, and that's central in terms of the hiring. And so just really wanted to thank you for putting that in the outreach material, and if you are a candidate wanting to work for the city of Sacramento, I'm sure you're probably watching this council meeting, figuring out if you want to join, and so I'm just putting out there that I care about a candidate who will center racial equity and economic justice, and so really just want to say thank you for the materials and look forward to moving this timeline along. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so at this point, I'd like to continue with Jennifer Wilkerson, who will come up and briefly discuss the salary ranges, and then she'll be followed by Shelley Banks-Robinson to come up and speak as well. Thanks, Jennifer.
Good evening. As part of the recruitment process, CPS HR completed a compensation study for the city manager, and they presented the study results and recommended adjusting the city manager's salary range to $273,211 to $420,684 annually. The salary was recommended for approval to the council at the April 1 personnel and public employee meeting, and was approved at the April 22 city council meeting. City council requested the additional information regarding salary for the city manager in comparison with the assistant city manager, and as presented in this report, there is a 23.4% spread between the classification's maximum salary range and a 26% spread between the maximum total compensation. Do you have any questions for me?
Good. Thank you so much, Jennifer. All right. Shelley Banks-Robinson.
I just want to briefly talk about the proposed review process. As part of Sacramento's ongoing commitment to transparency, accountability, and performance excellence, we are proposing a formal facilitated goal-setting review process for our charter officers, which include the city manager, city attorney, city auditor, city clerk, city treasurer, as well as other council-appointed officer, the director of public safety and accountability. This process would be guided by a third-party HR consultant, similar to the facilitation used during the city manager recruitment. The facilitator would work with mayor and each council member to develop a set of clear strategic goals for each appointed officer. These goals would then be reviewed and adopted by the full council, serving as the foundation for future performance evaluations. The goal of this initiative is to give both the council and the public a shared transparent understanding of the priorities and performance expectations for these leadership roles. Starting each evaluation cycle with collaboratively-defined objectives strengthens alignment between council direction and departmental operations, ultimately improving governance and service delivery. Importantly, this process also helps ensure compliance with the Brown Act, which requires open and transparent decision-making. Without a neutral facilitator, there is a higher risk of unintentional serial meetings or indirect consensus building that could violate the Act. A facilitator lawfully gathers individual input and presents it in a way that respects both the letter and the spirit of the law and preserves transparency. Beyond legal compliance, using a facilitator brings significant operational benefits. It creates a neutral, professional space for honest, forward-looking discussions. It removes interpersonal dynamics from the process and ensures that goals are measurable, realistic, and clearly tied to council priorities. It also promotes consistency, clarity, and accountability in leadership evaluations. Bringing in an external facilitator isn't just about HR logistics, it's a safeguard that protects the integrity of our governance, supports our transparency obligations under the Brown Act, and helps deliver the kind of accountable leadership Sacramento residents expect and deserve. And that is the end of the review. There is, on the last three pages of your packet, there is a brief outline of what a potential review process looks like that we would use to get started with the process when we hire the facilitator. Does anyone have any questions or comments for me?
Thank none? Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank the leadership of Councilmember Jennings, and thank you for this. I think this creates a nice, balanced, transparent process, which also removes us from part of having to schedule closed session, get things in, and just gives us a little bit more breathing room for us to do their jobs and somebody who's a professional in this area to do theirs, so that when we come together, we have, you know, transparent, consistent information in front of us, because we've approved goals, and then the evaluation is based on those goals, and it's just something, I tried, we didn't quite get there, but I think what I have learned from Cal City's Leadership Summit and talking to several other cities, that this is a normal process that many cities use, so we are not doing anything unique or that is not normal process set up in other jurisdictions.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we're good. I think we're good. Just have an incredible team, and they are working hard with each and every one of you, and I just want to make sure everybody does feel like this process is transparent, and it's one that they have total access to and all the knowledge as far as being able to understand what's going on within the process. We will work hard to get back on the timeline and to continue to work with the timeline that's out now, but we are working hard, and I've got a great team, and I just want to thank them for their work on this matter.
Thank you, Councilmember, for...
I would like to make a motion that we direct CPS to proceed with the executive recruitment process and direct staff to proceed with developing a formal facilitated goal-based performance review process for all appointed officers to the city council.
Okay. Second. We have a motion, a second. No further discussion or questions. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Aye, Gara? Aye, Gara. Unanimous. Thank you. Next item, please. Back to the regular agenda.
Thank you. We move back to the consent calendar. Consent calendar consists of item 1 through 14. I have no public comment on the consent calendar, but I do want to read to the record, item 13 was continued. We amended the agenda this afternoon, and I believe Councilmember Gara would like to continue item 14. Is that correct?
That's correct. Madam Clerk, continue item 14. And, Mr. Mayor, I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
And Councilmember Dickinson, you had comments?
Oh, thanks. So we're going to take 14 separately? Is that...
We're continuing item 14.
Oh, okay. All right.
Moving on, 1 to 13.
I just wanted to make a quick comment on item 9.
Okay. Please proceed.
You ready?
Ready.
Yes.
I just, I very much wanted to thank the staff for this application for, and agreement on getting some additional STIP funding, particularly for working on Marysville Boulevard from Arcade Boulevard up to North Avenue. And so it's William Shank and Ophelia Avalos and Lucinda, who we heard about, Lucinda must still be here somewhere, maybe she got away. Oh, okay. We feted earlier, I want to thank all three of them and other staff for working on this. I can't tell you how many times over how many years that I've driven up Marysville Boulevard and thought, "We really need to fix this street." And so to see this project moving forward and to have a real chance of putting together the funding to do something very meaningful is worth noting. So again, I want to thank you and thank the council for approving this.
So Mayor, you have a motion by Councilmember Gara and a second by Kaplan on the consent calendar, items 1 through 12.
Okay. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions?
Passes, yeah, passes unanimously.
Yes. Except for item 14. Continue.
Item 13 and 14 are both continued, so it's items 1 through 12. So we now move to item 15, a public hearing. That item is an ordinance listing San Francisco Boulevard as a landmark on the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Henry Fuss, Preservation Planner with the City of Sacramento, and I'll be presenting the landmark nomination for San Francisco Boulevard located in District 6 under file In 2013, when a disease began to cause the decline in the palm trees on San Francisco Boulevard, which is a public roadway segment between Stockton Boulevard and 55th Street, preservation staff were consulted to assist with selecting an alternative compatible species. This prompted the creation of a historic evaluation that found the nominated resource eligible for the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources and the California Register of Historical Resources. Due to staff shortages at the time, landmark proceedings for the nominated resource were not brought forward. In early 2024, work being undertaken by the Sacramento Municipal Utility District included the removal or significant trimming of palm trees located along the nominated resource. City staff were contacted by concerned citizens and advocacy groups, and in response, staff brought the historic resources evaluation before the Preservation Commission for a review and comment on September 17, 2024. At the time, the Preservation Commission recommended staff proceed with initiating a nomination to the Sacramento Register. The historic evaluation attached to your staff report concludes that San Francisco Boulevard appears eligible for listing on the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources under Criterion 3 pursuant to Sacramento City Code 7, Section 17604210, as a unique example of city beautiful movement infrastructure from the early 20th century. Staff presented a statement of nomination to the Preservation Director, who concluded at a public hearing on January 23, 2005, that the property appears eligible under Criterion 3. The nomination was then considered by the Preservation Commission on February 19, 2025, with all members of the commission voting in favor of making a recommendation to city council to list the nominated resource on the Sacramento Register. Distinctive characteristics of the nominated resource include the wide boulevard made up of four lanes of travel divided by two parallel seven-foot-wide median strips prominently featuring California palm tree, fan palm trees, side park strips that feature deciduous shade trees and sidewalks. The palm tree alleys in the medians of the boulevard have undergone minor changes due to age and disease-related loss of specimen. However, the landscape continues to retain a high degree of historic integrity, and new trees have been of a compatible species. Staff recommends the city council pass a motion determining the listing of the site on the Sacramento Register is exempt from the review under the California Environmental Quality Act and adopt an ordinance listing the nominated resource as a landmark on the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources. A notice of the public hearing describing the proposed landmark listing was sent to the City of Sacramento as the property owner of San Francisco Boulevard. Preservation Sacramento, the Colonial Heights Neighborhood Association, Oak Park Little League Baseball and Softball, and the South Oak Park Community Association have been notified of the landmark proceedings. Letters of support have been received from several residents and property owners adjacent to the proposed historic landmark. No objections to listing have been received by staff. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gara?
Mayor, if there's no comments, I'll open and close the public hearing.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
I do have three public speakers on this item.
And we will not close the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. William Berg, Shirley Daffin, and Ian Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor McCarty, members of the council. My name is William Berg. I'm president of the Board of Directors of Preservation Sacramento. Eleven months ago, we were contacted by Casey Shuffins, residents of Colonial Heights, about this issue, and as it turns out, the evaluation was done of this property 10 years ago by Melissa Morcos, former city staff who's now on our Board of Directors. And so we were able to facilitate some meetings, sat down with some coffee and bagels and some neighbors, and before you know it, it's a Preservation Director and then Preservation Commission. We did a walk of the Boulevard, and now here we are, and I would like to say thank you to Councilmember Gara for moving this forward. And this and the next item are proof that Sacramento's historic places are all throughout the city, and many of them haven't been identified yet, but because of the wisdom of our residents and the skill of our city government and the guidance of our council and mayor, we'll hopefully be listing more of them. And to this end... And to this end, this Sunday, the 25th, we're going to have a bike ride because it's May is Preservation Month and Bike Month. So 10:30 a.m., we're going to meet at Colonial Park. We're going to ride the Boulevard. We're going to ride 21st Avenue. We're going to ride up to Tahoe Park where Isaac Gonzalez has promised us donuts. And then we're going to ride back so we can burn off the extra calories. Thank you. I hope you will unanimously support this item. Have a great evening and a great bike ride.
Thank you for your comments. Shirley Daffin?
Good evening, and I'm very nervous, but very happy to be here. I'm a resident on the nominated resource, as you guys are calling it. I'm a resident on San Francisco Boulevard for the last 20 years. And I am, I and many of my neighbors are excited about this nomination, and we hope that you will unanimously pass it. You know, it's been a long night, so I'll conclude right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian Thompson is our final speaker on this item.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for hearing us. I'm a homeowner and landscape architect, and I'm, I live on San Francisco Boulevard. The sort of arched palm fronds of the palms there at San Francisco Boulevard are the gateway that sort of led me to find out about our neighborhood to begin with, Colonial Heights, and it's what led us to buy our house there. They, but it's more than just the gateway to the neighborhood. It's also where the neighbors gather. It's a, it's a safe, shared walkway, that sort of slow single lane each direction for joggers, cyclists, strollers, dogs, dogs and strollers. And it's also where our neighbors, also where neighbors from your districts come to take pictures of their cars, to shoot music videos. Why is it so special? Because it's been preserved up until this point. The character of the street, where it's got the palm trees in the center of those two, in those two medians, creating that archway, and then the deciduous trees on the outside create this just perfect shaded walkway for us to gather and walk down as neighbors, to meet each other, to connect. It's sort of a secondary park right within our neighborhood, and it's really important to us all, I think. I haven't heard of one negative voice about it. So I hope that you will join the previous commissioners in unanimously approving this landmark status, the San Francisco Boulevard. Thank you all.
Thank you. No more speakers?
No more speakers.
Yeah, I just want to thank the councilmen for working on this. This is an iconic street in Sacramento with those palm trees. And I remember, Councilmember, probably 15 or so years ago, I asked the city archives and the folks, hey, you do all these books on historic land park and Oak Park and East Sac. Why don't you do one about the Tahoe Park, Elmhurst Colonial Neighborhoods? And they're like, we don't have a lot of pictures and materials. And so we put out a call to the community, and people brought all these great relics. The picture on the book of those kids on the bikes coming back from the Little League game is the picture you see the most. And that picture came out of the call for images from families. We found one afternoon in Tahoe Park when everybody came to the concert in the park at Tahoe Park 15, 20 years ago. So, you know, full circle here, but I'm excited that we can further celebrate this important neighborhood, this beautiful street with those amazing palm trees. Not much shade with those palm trees, as you know, but they are still pretty good. But anyway, full support of this. Thank you so much, Councilmember. Councilmember Dickinson?
I just wanted to just tack on and say, I think there are three of us here, sitting here, who've had the pleasure of representing this neighborhood over the years. And it's always been such a great neighborhood, such a great street. It's just terrific to recognize its historic significance. So I'm happy to second the motion when it's made.
There you go, Councilmember.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, no, you brought back a lot of memories because we were trying to revive, like, what, you know, the history and the Colonial Theater and other places that came up. And we have today also with us Elgin Bradley, who has been on the Boulevard for 45 years as well, here in the, in the, in the audience as well. But I just, I'm excited to not, not only move this item, but first I'll close the public hearing and move the item, Mr. Mayor. But first off, to thank Shirley Daffin for being the organizer, getting people to the commission, bringing the awareness back up when the, when there were concerns about, you know, even smud and addressing some of the challenges with the, with the palm trees. There was a lot of care taken into recognizing this location. And for those of you and my colleagues that have not had a chance to go to San Francisco Boulevard, it boasts two parallel eight-foot-wide median planter strips with trees and shrubs and walkability. And as Ian brought up, and you know, thank you, Ian, for describing it vividly. I mean, if that, that concept that went into the quote-unquote "first suburb" with a streetcar, by the way, that went down the center, and my neighbors across the street, Carol, remembers taking the streetcar, not only there on San Francisco Boulevard, but on 21st Avenue. And if we would have only continued that positive thinking back then, you know, of a good planning design that lowered the speed of vehicles, that allowed for, like, the bicyclists in the photo of kids coming back from the Little League game and the streetcar, I think our city would be in a much different place today. We wouldn't have the fatalities and deaths on that. So I think not only is it important that we're celebrating and recognizing San Francisco Boulevard, but we should look back and think about some of the positive thinkings on how to design neighborhoods that brought back community. And that's one thing about Colonial Heights. Colonial Heights neighborhood is a rich, connected neighborhood because it's designed in a way that allows people to engage and get to know their neighbors and make a strong community. So with that, Mr. Mayor, again, I appreciate the opportunity to hear this. Wouldn't have happened without the great work of the staff. I only have one recommendation and suggestion and direction with the city manager in this, is that if Public Works has, today's been a big day for Public Works, but if they have a little time to go take care of the palm fronds, you know, the palm trees have been getting a little shaggy lately. So we would, we would, in the neighborhood, would greatly welcome Little Care &amp; TLC to San Francisco Boulevard. With that, I ask everyone's for their a vote and support.
We have a motion, a second. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's or abstentions? Hearing none. Item passes.
Passes unanimously. We move on to item 16, which is an, item 16 is an ordinance listing 1112, 40th Street is a landmark on the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, my name is Henry Fuss, preservation planner for the city of Sacramento. And now I'll be presenting the landmark nomination for 1112, 40th Street located in District 4 under file M-24013. Sorry, technical difficulties. There we go. The property owner of 1112, 40th Street retained the services of historic environment consultants who prepared the historic evaluation for this property. The historic evaluation attached to your staff report concludes that the property at 1112, 40th Street appears eligible for listing on the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources under Sacramento City Code, Section 17604210, as an exemplary example of American craftsman-style architecture. Staff presented a statement of nomination to the Preservation Director, who concluded at a public hearing on January 23, 2025, that the property appears eligible under Criterion 3. The nomination was then considered by the Preservation Commission on February 19, 2025, with all members of the commission voting in favor of making a recommendation to the city council to list the building on the Sacramento Register. The building retains a high degree of historic integrity in all six aspects. The neighborhood and building remain mostly unchanged. The building has had little to no alterations since initial construction, outside of a small addition on the side in 1917 and a later compatible addition on the rear. All elements on the facade appear in near original condition. Staff recommends the city council pass a motion determining the listing of the property on the Sacramento Register is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act and adopt an ordinance listing the nominated resource as a landmark on the Sacramento Register of Historic and Cultural Resources. A notice of the property, a notice of the public hearing describing the proposed landmark listing was sent to the property owner of 1112, 40th Street. Additionally, Preservation Sacramento, East Sacramento Improvement Association, ESAC Give Back, ESAC Chamber of Commerce, and East Sacramento Preservation have been notified of the landmark proceeding, and no objections have been received by staff. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a public comment on this?
I have no speakers on this item.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Pluckebom. Do you have to open and close the public hearing on this?
Correct. Councilmember Pluckebom, did your, did your motion include opening and closing the public hearing? Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So a motion...
Motion is second. No comments from councilmembers. Alls in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's or abstentions? Hearing none. Item passes unanimously. Next item?
Now, the next item, 17, is fiscal year 2025-26, citywide fees and charges.
Right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers and members of the public. The next three items you're going to have are public hearings on fees, which are required as part of the budget process. I know that there are some concerns that have been, that were voiced during budget hearings last week around fees, but you can always adjust them as part of budget adoption. So as you have your discussions tonight and then June 10, you can change the fees. And I want to introduce Brian Martin, who's going to go over the citywide fees and charges.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Brian Martin, Senior Budget Analyst with the Finance Department. The item before you is the public hearing for the FY 25-26 citywide fees and charges schedule. Staff is recommending adding 33 new fees, modifying 251 fees, and deleting 50 fees, for a total of 334 changes affecting seven departments. This will generate approximately $5.6 million in revenue for the general fund and $1.3 million for other funds. This figure has been updated from the table in the original report, where convention and cultural service fee changes where it miscategorizes general funds rather than community service fund. The associated revenue adjustments are necessary to provide appropriate cost recovery related to city programs and services. These increases are part of the proposed budget balancing strategies that were presented at the last council meeting on May 13. Any changes to items presented would affect the proposed budget and require additional action to balance the budget. If council chooses to provide direction to amend the fee schedule, we would then fold those changes and any additional balancing options into the June 10 budget for approval. If you have any specific questions about items included in this report, department representatives are here and available to answer. And finally, on one final note, staff would like to inform council of the citywide fee study process that kicked off this April this year. The city has contracted with a third-party consultant to conduct a comprehensive review over a two-year period, examining current city fees and comparing them against jurisdictions of similar sizes and service models. The culmination of this study will result in departments correctly charging for services and cost recovery. Thank you. That concludes the report. My understanding is one at a time. I'm happy to introduce the next.
Okay. So, public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor. I have three, three speakers on this agenda item. Matt McDonald, Kaylee Olgerson, and Chris Valencia.
Good evening. I'm Matt McDonald with the California Apartment Association, representing over 3,000 rental property owners in Sacramento, the vast majority of whom are mom-and-pop owners who operate on very thin margins. It is because of those mom-and-pops that CAA stands against this proposed fee increase. One thing that we want to press upon you is that rental housing is price-controlled. So when government decides to hike its fees, it is very likely that those costs cannot ever be recovered by a housing provider. Rental inspection fees, building permit fees, plan check fees, not to mention property tax and operational cost increases that businesses have to withstand, just like the city does. These will add up to driving some providers out of the market. At some date off into the future, when housing inventory drops and you wonder why, you can look at this proposal and know at least part of the answer if it is passed. Further, in the past month, I've heard the word "structural deficit" about 1,000 times. So here is my question. When do we get to the structural part? The 300-plus fee increases the council is considering right now aren't structural, nor are the 101 increases to the fire fees later tonight. In addition to the $62 million deficit this year, you've got another $30 million in deficit coming next year. When will we start hearing about structural solutions, like possibly a two-year budget cycle? The city needs to start thinking differently about how it will approach this problem so that we are not back here next year having the same exact conversation about businesses carrying the burden for others' runaway costs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kaylee Olgerson?
Good evening, Mayor McCarty and councilmembers. My name is Kaylee Olgerson, and I'm here on behalf of the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce and our member businesses that are citywide. We urge the council to take a thoughtful and inclusive approach when considering the fiscal year 2025-2026 citywide fees that are proposed tonight. Many of the fee adjustments proposed collectively represent a substantial financial burden for local businesses. These changes are occurring in the context of broader set cost increases and economic uncertainty, including inflation, staffing shortages, and involving regulatory environment. For small and mid-sized employers in particular, this cumulative impact is significant. We appreciate that some fee structures must be modernized to reflect current service levels and costs. However, modernization should not come at the expense of predictability or viability for the very businesses that drive Sacramento's economic recovery. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Chris Valencia is our final speaker on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Chris Valencia, and I'm here on behalf of North State Building Industry Association. I urge this council to take a cautious and thoughtful approach in considering all the numerous measures intended to raise funds. It's not just a single fee that is of concern, but numerous increased costs when added together. Overly burdensome tax liability will drive away entrepreneurs looking to invest in our city, leaving areas that should be thriving in continued blight. When operating a business in the city is not sustainable, there will be less overall revenue to rely upon. In the midst of a housing crisis, increased costs will slow development, and even more cost increase could bring development to a complete halt as we face an economically uncertain future. Developers plan for projects based on established fees, and these types of unexpected jumps can put projects in jeopardy. For the economic health of the city, increases should be halted and a holistic conversation about costs should be held with stakeholders so that we can reach a fair middle ground to ensure the viability of our city and business community. Simply reaching further into the pockets of already struggling entrepreneurs will not bring about the economic revitalization that so many of us envision for our great city. I urge this council to proceed with caution in enacting further fees. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a procedural question. I want to make sure I, if I heard correctly, you said, notwithstanding approving this, it's all subject to approval in the, in the budget.
That is correct.
Okay, so...
Two votes.
So I'm still trying to then parse if there's a particular fee that, that we're not enthused about, or any of us are not enthused about. How do, how, do we, do we vote no on this and then yes on the budget, or try to separate it out in the budget discussion?
So, so what I would recommend is, you know, moving this public hearing or closing the public hearing and approving this report, which is more informational, doesn't impact your ability during deliberations tonight or adoption on June 10 to say, hey, I don't like this fee increase. You know, you're going to be talking about that tonight. I don't like this fee increase, so I don't want to do it. You would give us that direction and we would incorporate that in the final budget.
Okay, I appreciate that. Because what the staff report says is approve the resolution, adopt the resolution approving the citywide fee schedule update. So that's why I was just trying to figure out this procedural component to it. Okay.
I'd just like to add, though, tonight, if we, if there is a fee that we, there is particular consternation with, much like any other restoration, we would appreciate the identification of a corresponding reduction in order to pay for that, because any fee that we don't approve will result in less revenue and a little bit of, more of a hole in the budget.
Yes, understood. Okay, thank you, Pete.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, Gara?
Thank you, Mayor. A question here, just procedurally, because if there, if we were to change a fee, a couple, one, these have to be done in a public hearing, but is there some actions by statute require us to have a 10-day notice? Is, are any of those, and they don't have, you don't have to answer that now. I just, I want to make sure that if, if the council is going to do that on, on June 10, that we're not getting into any, any procedural statutory noticing deadlines.
So what I'd recommend is that we can clarify deadlines. We can take any of the actions we want in the adopted budget and come and do cleanup with the necessary resolutions and noticing after the fact.
Okay. Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Do we already have a motion in a second?
We don't.
Okay. No more comments or council members or questions. We have a motion on this item. Moved by? Councilmember Kaplan, second by? Open and close the public hearing and a motion on the item. Moved by Councilmember Kaplan, second by Councilmember Gera. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? And none? And it passes.
Mayor, that passes unanimously. We move to item 18, which is entertainment fees amendment.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'm Dustin Hollingsworth, the Assistant Director of the Department of Convention and Cultural Services. On April 1st, 2025, the City Council approved an amendment to City Code Title V, Chapter 108, relating to permitting entertainment venues. The amendment, amongst other things, allowed for the creation of the limited entertainment permit and renamed some existing entertainment permits to provide greater clarity and to reduce confusion with other existing permit types. For example, the special entertainment permit was often confused with special entertainment permit was renamed to the temporary entertainment permit. When Tina Lee vote from the Office of Nighttime Economy and I presented on the amendment to the Entertainment Establishment Ordinance, we indicated that we were still assessing the proposed fees associated with the limited entertainment permit and that we would return to council in the coming weeks with a resolution to amend the citywide fee schedule to incorporate the new fees and to adjust the names of other fees to align with the amendment. Staff is requesting council pass a motion waiving Chapter 15B 3 of the City of Sacramento Council Rules of Procedures requiring that proposed budget issues such as fee increases to be reviewed by the Budget Audit Committee prior to being brought before council as needed for these fees had been discussed as part of the council discussion on April 1st and are critical for the implementation of the limited entertainment permit. Staff is proposing a $750 fee for the limited entertainment and a renewal fee of $650. Each limited entertainment permit is good for two years and has the potential for an extension of up to an additional two years. In effect, that would mean a cost of approximately $200 per year if they were able to get that. That incentivizes compliance and good behavior from the permit holders. No other fees are being changed at this time. In the resolution, however, fee names are being updated to align with the amendment as was approved by City Council on April 1st, 2025, and went into effect on May 2nd of 2025. These fees are not a tax under Proposition 26 as they fall into, under Exception 3A, a charge being imposed by a reasonable regulatory cost by a local government issuing licenses or permits, performing investigations, inspections, and audits, enforcing agricultural marketing orders, and administrative enforcement or adjudication thereof. And I'm available for questions.
Mayor, I have two speakers on that item. Shall we take those now?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Madeline Noel and Dion Dwyer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Madeline Noel with the Downtown Sacramento Partnership. I just wanted to say we're very enthusiastically in support of the adoption of the new entertainment permitting program, specifically including the limited entertainment permits. This tailored framework will significantly ease burdens on our smaller businesses, unlocking new opportunities and enhancing the unique diversity of downtown's entertainment offerings. Thank you for championing our local economy.
Thank you for your comments. Dion Dwyer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Dion Dwyer, representing the R Street Partnership. I want to thank staff and council for their work on this item. It's been a long time in the works. It's the right thing to do. This will help to activate sidewalk cafes and restaurants without creating a financial burden for that activation. We support the verification of this permit and urge approval of this new item. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item. Looks like Councilmember Maple.
All right. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I would like to open and close the public hearing and just really appreciate staff so much. Thank you, Tina, and to your team for this. I know it's been a long time coming. And I know it's a priority for many of our small businesses in the city, and I especially think along in my district in Oak Park, along Stockton Boulevard. There's so many places where I think these businesses have been looking for an opportunity to do something, and I think we've been really forward-thinking in that way. And I just really appreciate all the work that's gone into this. Thank you.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks. Again, well, both a procedural and substantive question. I'm just, is it because of timing that these didn't go through the committee? Not just this one, but all three of these, well, the next one did, but the last two. Is that fundamentally?
This was, this was as a matter of timing, trying to get the limited entertainment permit. As identified staff or the ordinance update went into effect on May 2nd, so without having the fee, we are unable to start issuing limited entertainment permits.
Okay, but we approve moving ahead with this on April 1st?
Correct. The 30-day for the ordinance to pass.
You're just getting to establishing the fees, though, now?
That's correct. This was continued from April 29th.
Okay. And as to the fees, they have to reflect, you say they reflect cost recovery. You've done an analysis that shows that?
That's correct.
Okay. I would appreciate it in the future for these kinds of things if you show your work, show that what you've done to justify the fee that you're charging because there's no way we know it otherwise.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
I'll second if nobody closed. I closed, and you seconded.
Yes. Okay, there we go. We have a motion and a second on this item. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Hearing none, unanimous.
Thank you. We are moving on to item 19, which is proposed fire prevention fee adjustments.
Good evening, Mayor, council, interim manager. My name is Tilden Billeter. I'm a deputy chief, and I oversee community services. Tonight, I have a short presentation to discuss the fire prevention fees proposed. Also, I have Jason Lee, our fire marshal, as well as Musume Razanami, our administrative officer, and Patrick Dyer from our fee studies company that did our survey if we have any questions to address after the presentation. Okay, so our, our last fire prevention fee increase was in July of 2018. That's also the same time that we increased our EMS fees. The time before that was all the way back in 2009. Back in 2018, council approved the same strategy that we're proposing tonight, which is 100% cost recovery for all fees except for the A2 and A3 occupancies. The A2 and A3 occupancies represent about 800 businesses and include examples like restaurants, bars, nightclubs, bakeries, cafes, and churches. In June of 2024, we were given direction to recover costs related to providing programs and services. Since the last study was completed, fire prevention has seen a 183% increase in special events and over a 40% increase in new construction and plan checks as well as annual inspections. In 2024, Sacramento Fire Department entered into a contract with a third-party vendor to conduct a department-wide fee study. It's probably important to note that that fee study is still being conducted. The only two that we've completed at this time is the EMS fee study as well as the fire prevention fee study. Fire prevention analysis was completed in March of 2025. A piece of that analysis was the fire department is currently recovering 54% of our cost of services. Our community outreach efforts started in March of 2025 and have gone up to about 30 minutes ago. We've been meeting with community partners, addressing questions and concerns. We started meeting with the mayor and council as well as a lot of the business partners on that list you see there. A number, bless you, a number of those partners we've met with, Jason, or the fire chief have met with multiple times in the last couple of weeks. We also presented to Budget Audit Committee in last April. At that time, the proposal was 100% cost recovery. Through some conversations and some feedback we've got, we've modified that to what is in front of you tonight. So the proposed fee increase tonight, we are using the same strategic approach that was used back in 2018, which is 100% cost recovery on all fees except for A2 and A3 occupancies that I described a little bit earlier. Those will be set at a 75% cost recovery. Every July thereafter, there will be a CPI increase. I don't think I noted it earlier, but back in 2018, what was also voted on was an annual CPI increase. That's been effective every July. The average of that CPI increase up to date has been about 3%. And lastly, moving forward, we will move to have and conduct a new fee study every three years. That is the conclusion of the presentation.
Okay, thank you so much for your presentation. We're going to take public comment first and then council comments. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have 11 speakers. The first is Elgin Bradley, then Frank Louie, then Tina Nguyen, then Juan Navalo.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Mayor is not here, however. Hopefully, he'll be aware of what it is that I have to say this evening. I've been operating a business on the Boulevard since 1979. For 35 years, I operated this business. During that time, I had many, many conditions that I had to adhere to, including fire inspections, insurance inspections, conditions that I had to meet in order to have insurance on my place of business. And over those periods of time, I noticed that there's redundancy, and that redundancy has always been a cost to me as a business operator. Fire department inspections are conducted and insurance requirements are required. They require the exact same thing for us to be able to operate a safe business, a business in which they are willing to cover insurance-wise, that the fire department comes in and conducts their business, their inspections. So as a result of having to pay increased insurance fees, fire department fees, increased fire inspection fees, as well as all the other fees that we have to adhere to and pay as a business, is a real burden on a small business to try to operate and be successful. My concern is that these increased fees could possibly cause businesses to have to shut down or not even be able to comply with the regulations and the requirements that is going to be necessary in order for us to open up and provide a safe place for people to be able to gather and provide a service to. Self-certification, self-inspections is what it is that I believe would be in the best interest of a business owner, a business operator, and the city. We know what it is that we have to do in order to keep our people safe, provide a safe environment, have a safe operation that will comply with what it is that the city requires, the insurance requires, and all the other state inspectors who visit our.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Frank Louie is our next speaker, then Tina Nguyen.
Good evening, the Mayor, City Council members. My name is Frank Louie, and I'm Executive Director of the Stockton Boulevard Partnership. We represent over 420 diverse small businesses along the commercial corridor. Many of your small mom-and-pop businesses still struggling to survive post-COVID and having to navigate economic challenges from the recent tariffs, which contributes to a higher cost of doing business. For these reasons, the Stockton Boulevard Partnership does not support the proposed fee inspection fee increases being presented to council tonight. The proposed increase, scheduled to begin in July of 2025, is the first of what many become reoccurring fee escalation every three years with future increases to be reassessed, potentially approved by council. While we fully support fire safety and understand the need for sufficient staffing within the fire department, this fee proposal disproportionately impacts small businesses already operating on thin margins. The fact that the increased revenue directly contribute to balancing the city's 2025-2026 budget reveals that this is not simply about public safety, but it's also about structural budget fix being placed on the backs of small businesses. To address the staffing needs without unjustly burdening small businesses, we urge the City Council to explore self-certification programs for low-risk occupancies. These programs already are used in other municipalities that allow eligible businesses to complete a basic fire compliance checklist annually, reserving the fire department's inspection for higher-risk operation. This would reduce the inspection volume, save city resources, and lower the cost of compliance for small businesses. We ask the city work with the businesses on the Stockton Boulevard to develop more equitable, innovative solutions, maintain.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comment. Your time is complete. Tina Nguyen, then Juan Navalo, then Matt McDonald.
Hello, Mayor. City council members and fellow citizens. My name is Tina Nguyen, and I'm one of the many business owners on the Stockton Boulevard corridor. First, I would like to say I fully support the fire department. Jason Lee has been great in helping me in other things, so this is not in opposition to the fire department. But I would like to offer a solution to maximize those resources and find a creative solution, and that would be self-certification. I already have to pay a fire protection company to come out and tag my fire extinguisher. I think having them, and it's redundant, and we're talking about redundancy and inefficiency. That's one of them. Secondly, my insurance carrier also sends someone out, a third party, to do the inspection. So if we could form a self-certification portal where these items can be uploaded, and that would be sufficient for the fire department, we can then shift those resources to something more important, where they can be on the front lines and where they're necessary and not at my restaurant trying to figure out if I have the preventative measures to stop a fire, which I already have to do anyway. So that would be the first. The second, I saw on the list of fees that apartment units between 3 and 15 already self-certify. I'm curious to see what that method is and if we can apply it to the rest of the other retail industries or industries in retail businesses. I don't know if you saw on the list as well, the Golden One Center currently pays $654 per business in the Golden One Center. That hike is over 1,000%. It's going to be $7,045 for each business to get certified by the fire department. If you are a Kings fan, you will know that those prices are already high. And if a small business like that has to incur this kind of cost annually, I don't know what that would do to those businesses, but I can only speak for myself. It may seem incremental to you, you know, $450 to $739, but we spend so much money in other permits, sales, licenses, alarm permits, storm drains, so.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Juan Navalo and Matt McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. My name is Juan Navalo, Vice President for the Sacramento Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. I want to begin by recognizing the critical role that fire prevention plays in the safety and sustainability of our city and our small businesses too. We appreciate the work of the fire department and the city staff in conducting a comprehensive study and recognizing the unique impact fee adjustments may have on our small businesses. We also acknowledge and thank the department for responding to stakeholder feedback by reducing proposed fees for small businesses under A2 and A3 assembly categories. However, many of our members, especially our restaurants, daycares, and culturally-based event centers, that doubling of this cost on top of everything else that they have to manage at this particular point and for what is to come, both from the state and federal administration, this creates a shock that they're not poised to absorb in a single year. Therefore, we respectfully ask that the City Council consider phasing in these proposed fees increases over a four-year period, applying 25% increases annually. This phase approach has precedent here in the city. It has been used effectively with specific plans, park impact fees, Department of Utilities, and it allows for business owners to plan for cost adjustments while staying compliant and managing their operations. Small businesses are key partners in Sacramento's economic resilience. Let's ensure that these fee policies support their sustainability and their growth, especially as we work together towards long-term budget sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Matt McDonald, then Kaylee Olgerson.
Good evening. Again, Matt McDonald with CAA. You should have all seen two letters from us. One, a coalition letter joined by 12 other local organizations with concerns about the fire fee increase. The other, just from CAA, that outlines our specific concerns with how the fire fee increase will impact rental housing. Tonight, we don't want to minimize the value of the city. Tonight, we don't want to minimize the value of the work of the fire department that they do for the community. We do appreciate the fire department taking the time to brief many of us on the business community on their arguments in favor of the fee changes. In particular, Jason Lee, his position was not envious. But we do want it to be understood that we feel doubling fire inspection fees is an overreach. Regardless of the reasons, no private business would be able to explain to its customers why it should suddenly pay double for any good or service. In particular, we object to the 118% increase that will be borne by small mom-and-pop rental apartment operators of 3 to 15 units doing, already doing, a self-certification inspection process. Now imagine you're an owner. You're doing the inspection work yourself, and suddenly the city is telling you that you need to pay the fire department more than double to do the work yourself. Budget deficit or no budget deficit, there needs to be a reasonable relationship between the service provided and the money paid. We ask the council to consider removing the fee increase for 3-15-unit self-certification providers. Doing so would signal some level of relief to our thinnest-margin housing providers from this council. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kaylee Olgerson, then James Allison, then Jamison Parker.
Hello again, Mayor McCarty and council members. I'm here on behalf of the Sacramento Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce and our member businesses across the city of Sacramento. We recognize the city's responsibility to ensure public safety and address fiscal challenges. However, the proposed fire prevention fee increases, which in many cases will double and take effect in just over a month if approved tonight, pose a significant financial burden on local businesses. We urge the council to adopt a phased implementation, allowing businesses time to plan and adjust. Finally, we ask the council to consider the broader context. A $62 million budget deficit and additional fee increases citywide. The cumulative impact on Sacramento's business community is substantial and must be thoughtfully weighed together. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members and staff. My name is James Allison with the Power &amp; Alliance, a property business improvement district representing over 1,100 properties, businesses, and over 30,000 jobs in Sacramento's manufacturing and industrial core. You know, when I first brought this item to our stakeholders, the immediate response was, oh, the firefighters need something? What do they need? Name it. We're gonna help. Followed very quickly by, how much? And that really kind of summarizes the general setting that we're talking about right now. A lot of times, you're going to hear, potentially tonight or as the next couple of weeks move forward, that, you know, increasing fees and not being helpful to our business community is going to drive businesses out of Sacramento. I don't necessarily prescribe to that notion because I think that it implies that that's not already happening. Power &amp; Boast, some of the lowest vacancy rates that we have here in the city of Sacramento, and we're already seeing longtime, high-value clients and tenants leaving our district to go either across the river or further down Highway 50. We need to be very careful with the conversations that were happening because, just as the city itself has to deal with setting a budget every year and analyzing its own costs, so almost every single business in Sacramento. What we need to look at is not simply this issue as a silo, but understanding that the previous conversation that we've had, followed by the subsequent conversations we've had, are all happening within the same ecosystem. And every single fee that you look at that sees a business cost increasing is weighing into the calculus of how long I can continue to do business here in the city of Sacramento. So at the very least, please, we're offering a solution to please just bring forward a phased approach, if we must, something that can be absorbed over time and really felt over an extended period, because, simply put, 100% increase overnight isn't feasible for any business. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jamison Parker, then Deion Dwyer, then Madeline Noel.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Jamison Parker, on behalf of the Midtown Association, representing over 1,300 properties with the mission of making Midtown the center of cultural creativity and vibrancy. I want to start by, like many others, expressing our appreciation for the fire department and the essential work that they provide to keep our community safe. I want to also acknowledge the leadership of the fire department, as they have continued to be an excellent partner of Midtown. However, we do have concerns with the proposed fire prevention fee adjustments as they're presented here this evening. Our concern is not just with the fee adjustment in isolation, but really with the city's ongoing pattern of implementing new fees, department by department, without evaluating the overall burden on them. While some larger ownerships will be able to absorb the cost of those fees, it's the small businesses, including our restaurants, venues, our event organizers, that will really be hurt by these fees the most. In Midtown alone, over 55% of our sales tax revenue comes from these small businesses, many of which are already operating on a very thin margin with the very challenging public space conditions. Businesses do not have the option of increasing prices or reducing costs to account for these increases. If the city does move forward with the increased fees, we ask that it be phased in, using a multi-year approach, that small businesses and events can receive specific considerations. This has been a standard use for the city, using it in specific plans, the adoption of park impact fees, the Department of Utility fees as well. In particular, we would ask that it be looked at a multi-year approach, four years and a 25% tranche at a time. Let's ensure that the path forward balances public safety with economic sustainability of our businesses, making sure that we make Midtown and Sacramento a vibrant and livable area. Thank you.
Deion Dwyer, then Madeline Noel.
Good evening. Deion Dwyer with our street partnership. We obviously support our first responders, and we want to applaud the leadership of the fire department. We understand the impacts that we're all facing this evening with the city budget, but we are also asking for a phased approach. This has been done in the past with many other fees. We're looking for transparency and clarity for small businesses in our district, and so we understand fees are inevitable as we move forward with a large budget gap, but we'd ask that it be done so in a phased approach, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you, sir.
Madeline Noel, then Chris Valencia will be our final speaker.
Hi, council members, Mayor, and Mr. Jason Lee. I'm Madeline Noel with the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, a property-based improvement district responsible for fundamentally serving our central neighborhood in the heart of Sacramento. First, thank you to the fire department for their work preparing tonight's comprehensive report. We appreciate the ongoing dialogue with the fire marshal and deputy chief, and look forward to continuing these conversations to ensure a thoughtful, sustainable approach to fire prevention fee adjustments. We understand the city's needs to recover costs for essential fire prevention services. However, an increase of this magnitude risks unintended consequences: job losses, reduced sales tax revenues, and long-term erosion of the economic base that funds essential city services. In short, when businesses struggle, our city struggles. To reach 100% cost recovery, we urge a phased approach, perhaps a 25% annual increase over the next four years. This would give businesses more time to adapt while still meeting the city's long-term fiscal goals. But to truly confront an ongoing structural deficit effectively, we must seek to grow our economy and generate revenue through economic development. Policies that will grow our transient occupancy tax and sales tax before placing the full weight on local businesses and their customers. Sacramento's momentum depends on a balanced, sustainable solutions. Fire prevention is vital, and so is business viability. We're committed to working together toward a plan that supports both. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Chris Valencia.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. It's me again, Chris Valencia, on behalf of the North State Building Industry Association. I want to first start off by thanking Fire Marshal Lee for all the work that he's done and all the engagement. We really, truly do appreciate you working with us on this. As we've heard, there is much concern about all the fee increases being considered by this council, with more to come. The staring jump of this proposed fee increase is another example of one that will hit our business community hard. While we understand the fee adjustment is necessary, we request that this new schedule be phased in over four years at a 25% a year, at 25% a year until fully realized. Drastic increases such as these will have detrimental impact on our business community, slowing development, the establishment of new businesses, and negatively affecting the sustainability of current businesses. During a time of increasing economic uncertainty, it is important that we do not overburden our businesses that are facing the same fiscal challenges, doing what they can just to keep their doors open and employees on payroll. We ask that there be a collaborative approach with stakeholders, as we all seek solutions to maintain our vital city services together. Again, I urge caution and consideration of new fees, and that the cumulative impact of all these proposed increases be considered. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
One more, final one.
Mr. Smith?
You just called me Mr. Smith.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
What I'm doing is I'm going to be able to allow Mr. Musk to actually have a home and have his children, because he hasn't been in this country as long as I have, 75 years. Now, I'm referring to your military disaster leave, and I got the molecules done with what I'm doing. And for example, the things I'm going to be starting out, they told me I'm going to be doing 3 million units, not 1 million units, with these companies from China, and they also told me I had a bug on my phone. Now, I've been getting bugged, and really bugged personally, because all these people who are in all these administrative positions, not you guys, and you're doing the best you can with what you have to work with, have been really getting adulterized ever since they got into office, because they're taking the money now and they're running, and as the governor, I mean, the president has brought in all his CEOs from other countries, from all the, effectively dealing with all the countries in the world, companies, right down to the molecules and material solutions. We have the physics, and we have the chemistry, which Elon knows, and then Elon gets stuck doing assembly. And he has to sit in an assembly line, and he's got five-minute meetings, and then all of a sudden, he gets to do his own thing. He's got all these perfect people for the jobs, like Bill Gates had, hired all the better people, and he had to go to Apple to get Steve Jobs to have the programming for the Apple computers. Now, where I'm at is to be in a position like nobody else is, because I do this work round the clock, and I've been up like for the last eight days, and I only sleep about two hours a day, and I have to eat my diet, and I'm going to have all these people on my diet because they look like ducks. And you understand that I read somewhere that the president and Elon is doing Pepsi, 10 Pepsis a day, 500 milligrams, Diet Pepsis, that's 5,000 milligrams of caffeine a day. Hello, that's why the president's face is red, and he's just being a puppet, trying to watch out for his own money, and that's what it's showing in every article you see in the papers practically. And so what we're dealing with here is a lot of publicity, and it's just what they like to go by. So when you're-
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you. No more public comment. Council member Maple, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to our public commentators and speakers. Some of you have been with us since this morning. I saw your shining faces in lawn legislation committees, so thank you for sticking with us through this very long, long day, but obviously very important topics that not only impact our residents, our small businesses, everyone in our community. So thank you for being partners with us in this really difficult time as we discuss our budget deficit. I have a couple of questions related to the proposed fire fees. The first question I have is actually one that got brought up by some of our commentators from the Stockton Boulevard Partnership around the self-certification. And so that is a question that I have. You know, if, what I have heard is that if you are to have an insurance certificate from your insurance company as one of these businesses, that they come out and do an inspection, and that there's a possibility that that could, that insurance certification could be used as a self-certification instead of having the fire department come out and do a separate inspection? I'm wondering if you can help me understand that.
That's a great question. Hi, Mayor, Council, Chris Costamano, Fire Chief. So the insurance inspection is an inspection of liability. When the fire department goes out and certifies, whether it be a business or an apartment complex, it's a health and safety inspection. We're inspecting their occupancy load, we're inspecting their fire protection systems. When we inspect and we leave a permit behind for the annual inspection, that can be used with the insurance company, unlike a liability inspection that's done by an insurance company that does not cover the fire inspection side of the house.
Okay. So essentially, these are different kinds of inspections?
They're definitely different types of inspections, and it depends on the insurance company that you're working with, what they will accept. But we do have a thorough inspection that we can leave behind for the, with the permit for them to submit to their insurance company.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is it can go one way but not the other. So for example, if you come out and do your inspection, some insurance companies will accept that and say, yes, that will count as an inspection for us, and we'll insure without doing their own inspection, but we can't necessarily do it the other way around because what they're looking for are different things, potentially.
Yes, they're looking at the liability that they have insured. We're looking at the health and safety of the occupants of the building. The fire protection systems that are in place, whether it be a sprinkler system or a hood system at a restaurant, it's a different inspection.
Okay. And just so I understand, you know, obviously, if you have a restaurant or some other kind of small businesses, typically, there's more than one type of thing that you're going to be inspecting, right? So you might inspect hood, you might inspect something else. Do you typically try to do all of those in one and kind of knock them out as much as you can in one shot? Or do you find yourself going out often, and then folks are having to pay fees that maybe they're not expecting?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jason. I'm the fire marshal for the city of Sacramento. To kind of explain our inspection process, yes, we, when we do our annual inspections or a fire inspection, we will do a comprehensive inspection. It's based upon state code. So that's what is the driver for our inspections. It's based upon state code, which is out of Title 24 and also Title 19. So that gives us the legal authority and to do the inspections. But yes, we do do a comprehensive inspection of all fire protection systems and of all of the areas and so forth, to make sure that everyone's safe.
Okay. One of the other comments that I heard, and thank you, was around apartments, this is switching over to housing now, for apartments 1 through 13, that they have previously been able to self-certify, and now we're moving away from that. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And that was, that's an older ordinance for us. It was put on the books back in the 80s. And in fact, if we could take it off tonight, I would take it off tonight. I've worked for the city for 30 years, and the self-inspection is where we see some of the more dangerous things for us as firefighters and our residents in the city. It depends on who does the inspection. They're not a fire prevention professional, so those smaller units are typically where we see- Just, it's, the incident of fire sometimes is in the smaller, self-certifying units.
Okay. So based on your experience, you're saying, what you're seeing is that when there have been the smaller, the 1 through 13, and they haven't been inspected by the fire department, you tend to see issues there that you, or even more fires in those cases than in places that have been inspected by the fire department?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah?
Real quick, for our self-certification program, we do review all of the paperwork and affidavits that come in from the property owners. If we do see irregularities or issues with that, we will send out one of our fire protection officers to do an inspection or follow-up on that property. We have about 1,700 or so within our, that self-cert inspection program, and about 500 per year are pulled out because of issues. We do send an officer out there.
So even, even if you're in that, one of the categories that allows you to self-certify, it doesn't mean that you're not going to maybe get flagged and have, and I would say, you know, of course, we all want to be safe, and as someone, I represent a district that has unfortunately experienced quite a few pretty serious fires, and since I've been in office, including people losing their lives. And so that's a very real fear that we have and threat in our, in Sacramento, and we also have an aging housing stock and a lot of aging infrastructure in general, and so I think it's something that we need to be even more vigilant on than maybe some other cities that have a lot of newer buildings. We just need to be thoughtful of that. So I really appreciate you answering my questions around that. Let me make sure I had all of my questions answered here. Just, I know this has been said in this meeting and then also in previous meetings, but just so the public is extra clear on this, you know, we, do we raise fees at all to make, you know, profit or gain revenues, or are they only to cover the costs of what we are currently doing in terms of inspections?
So the study that we did with MGT is governed by Prop 26. We do not raise fees to make revenue. We raise, our fees are raised to cover cost.
So it's only covering the cost of the inspections that are actually occurring? And then, how long has it been since we've revisited these fees?
That's another good question. It's been seven years since our last study that we did. That was done in 2018, and at that time, we did a similar roll-in of the fees. So it was 100% of fees across the 101 different fee types, and we did the 75% roll-in for A2 and A3, the small businesses.
Okay. And, you know, I don't want to ask the question why, even though I think you were here at the time, not in your current role, but, you know, I'm assuming at the time, maybe it was just, you know, we had a lot going on, it wasn't a top priority, but just, do you have any thoughts about how we can move forward and ensure that we're not raising fees, waiting long periods of time so that the fees raise at an incredible rate?
So we've, we've put it into our internal policy that every three years we'll do, three to five years, we'll do a review like this. We did struggle a bit with the pandemic. In 2018, we were in good times. We rolled into the pandemic, and last June, we were asked by council to look at recovering fees, so we're here tonight before you to work on that piece. So we're here tonight before you to work on that piece with the council members that were here last year.
And is that, that's a best practice in other jurisdictions?
It's a best, best practice in the industry and other jurisdictions, three to five years.
Thank you, thank you. And that's it for my questions. I'll just have a couple of comments, and then I'll wrap up. I, I want to say that I hear, I hear you. I hear the small businesses in my district, the restaurants, the folks who are just trying to make it, and this is, it's got to, it's got to hurt, seeing, seeing these fees, especially when you're just trying to, you don't know if you're going to make your payroll next month, or you don't know if you're going to make your, your lease payment. And so that's, that's loud and clear to me. In fact, that's one of the number-one concerns that I've heard from residents in my district along Stockton Boulevard that I share with Mayor Protam, Broadway, Freeport, you name it. And so with this, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion, and my motion is that we pass the proposed fire fee adjustments, but that we, with the amendment, that for the next fiscal year, the prevention fees for the A2 and A3 small assembly categories, which affect about 800 businesses in our city, will be reduced to 75% of the cost as a phase in. And to offset that, that temporary decline, which you have instructed us to do, I would like to direct $175,000 from the NUR-1 fund, which is the city's discharge revenues. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Councilmember Gera?
Councilmember Maple, did that include opening and closing the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And did we have a second?
Gera, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the first, you know, I'm seconding this a little begrudgingly because it's, I think, you know, having visited so many of the businesses on Stockton Boulevard, meeting so many of the other small businesses up in areas like North Gate and even Marysville Boulevard, Del Paso, it's tough. It really is. And the, you know, the owners are doing it, one for their livelihood, it's a passion of theirs, but it's, these are, these are very much family people in the community. And so the impact to them, I'm, I'm very sympathetic and, and understand that, that what it means to them. But here, here, I want to continue to explore the self-certification concept. And let me, let me say this also, saying that, I'm not saying that I support or oppose this self-certification, but I did do a 48 ride-along, and I went with them and went and stopped with one of our fire captains, and we stopped to get coffee at a new building. And we were looking through, and he was describing the challenges that he had as he was looking through and pointing at different parts and said, this is where we could have an issue. So that, that brought a lot of awareness to me about the dangers of, just in general, even when something is freshly built versus something that's aged. But I do, do question, though, if, if we can't try to look at this self-certification process. So while this, this, this item's moving forward, for those in the previous conversation that we had on item, I think it was the two previous items, that we'll have another, an opportunity, another bite of the saplet at the, at the, at the final budget vote, I'd like to get some information back here from the Fire Chief and the, and the Fire Marshal. One, on the, on the liability issues of self-certification, okay? Instinctively, you know, obviously, having a Fire Marshal inspect a building versus an insurance inspector inspect a building are, you know, if you asked me, who do I trust more? I'll trust, I'll trust the Fire Marshal more. But could there not be a process where the Fire Marshal, because I'm sure, and I, and I don't expect you to speak for an insurance person, or to speak, and speak on behalf of the insurance industry, but I'm assuming, and I'd like to find out this, they have to hire a contractor, that's a certified contractor, to validate their insurance claim. And those contractors have to be experts on Title 24 and Title 19. So is there a scenario where the, the fire department could say, hey, we will have a pre-qualification inspection affidavit, where we have a pre-qualified, you know, contractors who know, and we validate their, their standard? Because those contractors have to build to the standard you're going to inspect. So I guess is, I'd like to find between now and our budget timeframe, is that a process? Is that an opportunity to continue that? Again, and, and I, I recognize the concerns that may have instinctually, but I'd like to see just some raw data, you know, as we move forward. Because I think our constituents, our business owners, our restaurateurs, you know, they, they want us to see, is there, is there another option for that, particularly for the smaller assemblies? And we're talking, you know, you know, I go to Tina's restaurant there when we had lunch the other day. It's a, it's a relatively small place. So it, not a, not a very complex building. I'd say the cuisine that they're making is complex and tastes delicious, but, but the building itself, I think, you know, is something that we have a lot of contractors that can do or inspectors can do. So I'd like to get some information on that. And on top of that, on the city side, is there a liability on the city? So this is for the city attorney. How does a self-certification program affect the city? So I, I think there's, this is an area where we have to explore, at least for the time being here, if we're asking our businesses to pay more. I'd like to understand, is there a, a kind of a pre-qualification process that we could do? What effects it has to the city? And can it be done since we've been doing it? So we've been doing it for, for small apartment complexes. Even a 15-unit building is still pretty significant, you know? So I'd like to get that information. The second issue I'd like us to consider here, again, coming back for June 10th, and this is not only for the fire department, but on our, maybe, maybe it's on the building department, but there's a trade-off when, for building, for a cost to an apartment owner or a bill, or a home that someone's renting or whatnot, on the, the quality of that housing. Okay, there's, you heard testified today that, okay, if there's a, there's all these additional fees adding up, at some point, I worry about the impacts to the quality of maintenance and improvements. Now, some of those may not be fire risks, but they may, there may be other issues that are either aesthetic or that are deteriorating the quality of our housing stock. So I, I don't know in which department this would fall under, but folks who are thinking about the quality of our housing stock. There's one thing, maintaining the amount of housing we have, growing the amount of housing, but also maintaining the quality of the housing. So, yes, of course.
So are you talking about rental stock? Because we don't inspect, okay, so it would be through probably the rental housing inspection program, so I'd...
Perfect, yes. Yeah, that would be Peter Lemos then, I guess. So, so, you know, there's a trade-off, because if we're asking them to pay more, you know, I think here in some of those, like say, an additional from 357 to 625, you know, what is the trade-off there? Do we see a degradation in the housing stock? I'd like to get that answer. Finally, this has, it's, it's tangential, but it speaks to the overall health of the fire department and, and the response time. And we did a fire assessment of the level of service that we have overall in the city by fire response. That report, I think, was done in 2017, if I recall, and it's, it's out of date now. It showed gaps, at least in District 6 and in the South area, where the response time falls below, or falls much farther than four to six minutes in certain areas. And I think it's like Stockton and 47th and those areas there, based on the, on the maps. So we don't have Station 9 open. I, you know, I don't see it opening up in this budget. So I, this is maybe for the city manager. I'd like to see us how we go back, again, it's tangential, but look at that fire assessment report again for next year, because I think we need to update that and understand the full scope and the health of the, the fire department as well. So with that, Mayor, I'll, you know, again, I seconded the, the motion. I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Maple, for, for working with the city manager on crunching the numbers here on, on how to get to 25%. There are no easy solutions, but I think this is at least is a, a piece for mitigating with the small business, small renter, restaurateurs or the places of assembly in category A2 and A3, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Talamontes.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be supporting this as amended by my colleagues. Public safety is important to me. But it does hurt. You know, I used to be a small business owner, and it's a challenge to just go through the City of Sacramento permitting processes, and then the county, and then if you go to West Sac, it's a different county. You go to Rancho, it's just, we had a food truck, so we would travel everywhere, and there was always different policies and procedures for everywhere we went, and it drove us crazy. And that's one thing that us as the City of Sacramento, like, yes, we need to, I think one of the public commenters said, we need to grow our TOT, we need to bring business here, we gotta, you know, grow our revenue. And that's something that we all are now like screaming and shouting because there's going to reach a point where we just, as a city of Sacramento, can't like just continue increasing our fees on everything. We need to make it balanced, and we're gonna, like, it's that structural component that, you know, that we've been discussing here on the dais. But we need to figure it out, and, and that's all of us here, staff, leadership, everybody to grow our revenues. And that's one thing that I think sometimes too with small businesses, you know, we have storm drainage fees that we're updating, we have sewer fees, we have just different fees for different departments, or even just different organizations in general. And all of these come together at the end for the small business owners, and they feel that impact, and it, and it hurts fiscally. So I think we, as a City of Sacramento, need to do a better job about our departments working together on timelines of when, what fees will be coming down the pipeline, and really just figure out how we can best support small businesses. We want them to thrive, and we want to support them while also updating our fees, but also we got to be really sensitive to all of them not coming at the same time. So just like for future reference, I think it's just, yeah, we just got to do a better job. City Manager?
So thank you for that, Councilmember Talamontes. And one of the things that I've been working on with our team is pulling together a schedule. We had one before the 2022 election, and we do need to, I, I feel like that's the feedback we really heard when we went to Midtown, is that people didn't know what was coming. So we are pulling that together and will share that publicly so that everybody has a sense of the impact fees that might be being considered, and the different water, sewer, solid waste, storm drain, R218 fees. And then we'll get on the cycle, and this will be on the calendar for regular updates of citywide fees and charges and different departments when those will be coming. So people will be very aware of the processes, and it'll help us, I think, do a little bit better job on outreach as well. So thank you.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be wonderful. So that's about it. I just, it hurts to do this, and obviously, we have a budget crisis, but we need to make sure that we're working with our small businesses so that Sacramento thrives. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bing?
Thanks, Mayor. I too just want to echo my colleagues, Vice Mayor Talamontes in particular, that I know that our small businesses are feeling the multiple fees that are coming at them, right? And it's making it harder for them really to run their business and to take care of their families. I had very similar questions to Councilwoman Maple, but she asked many of them. We also share two corridors, Florent and Mack Road as well. And I was going to ask the question of how are we ensuring we're not pulling the Band-Aid five, 10 years from now on these businesses? And so I appreciate that we'll be doing a fee studies every three years to be more proactive. I do support reducing the cost of recovery, but I've heard from several public speakers that could we go as low as 25? What the motion on the table right now is to do cost recovery at 75. I'm just curious how we came up with that number? Why not 50? Why not 100%? Just curious to know how we came up with that number. And I think it's important to provide rationale to the public, because if we can go 50, why not 50? So I'm just curious to, to have a better understanding, and if we can articulate that to the public, that would be great. That question is for Councilwoman Maple and, yeah, City, City Manager.
Thank you for the question. So with working with our city manager and identifying the funds that we had actually available, that's the, the maximum amount that we, that we felt comfortable going with. So that's what's in the motion.
Can I ask, when you say you felt comfortable with, I'm just curious...
We don't have other identified funds to do additional, more than 75%.
So are, so I'm just curious to know, like, so does that mean that the additional funding that you requested for, is that the cap that we can do, Laney? Is that the cap at 75% that we can take from that fund that Councilwoman Maple mentioned?
It's about the entirety of the fund, right? It's 175,000?
Yep.
175,000 to take it to 75%, so you could maybe get to 76% with the remaining. It just doesn't, it's not, there's not a lot of option there unless you identify other funding sources to do something in addition to.
Okay. So but you're saying from that funding source, that's the max that we can do? Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate the clarity on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks. Let me follow up a little bit on this, this line, but I'd, I'd say that unfortunately, where we are is the consequence of not, of not updating on a, on a routine basis, and none of us likes to raise fees, and then we face these kinds of circumstances. I'm encouraged to hear that, that we're going to look at a more systematic approach to, to fees in general. But obviously, we all appreciate the, the challenge and the burden of, of fees, especially for, for small businesses. And perhaps this is a precursor, cursor to the budget discussion, but you're projecting under 100% recovery to, to realize 3.2 million annually this coming budget year, if I read the staff report right? Is that right?
That's accurate, yes.
And so just simple math, if you, if you cut that to 50%, you'd get 1.6 million. And if you cut, if you cut it to 25%, as some speakers suggested, you get 800,000, unless, unless there's something...
So currently, we're only at 54% of our recovery. So as you start making those cuts, then it's, it's going to go dip below anything that we could, we have right now.
Yeah, I, I, well, that's a good point. I didn't understand the speakers to be suggesting 50% of cost recovery. I understood, so they're going to be suggesting a 50% or 25% increase. So, so it would play off the 3.2. But regardless of, of the math exercise, I'm curious whether, in your conversations with, with the community and business associations, the others, you heard these kinds of proposals, whether you had any discussions among yourselves about, well, if we were to do that, what would we have to do to offset it? Because obviously, this is a zero-sum game. Any discussions that you all have had about what options would be if you didn't raise, raise it, or alternatives? Maybe that's a Laney question, I don't know.
Yeah, so I would ask council to look at the list of items. I think it starts on page 991 of the published item, and it is the reduction strategies not used. And so if you're asking the fire department to cover any costs of reductions, it, the first item would be, hold please. I'm not finding fire not used.
Well, that's, that's okay. I understand what you're, what you're referring to.
But it would be to, to go to these lists.
And I'm just asking whether there was any discussion along those lines at this point that, that you all had among yourselves after hearing the, after hearing the comments of, of business and community members?
Yes, we had internal discussions, and we discussed where we could possibly make adjustments for the business community, and the A2 and A3 is what came up because it affects a lot of the small businesses. It's over 800 small businesses in our communities. So that's, that's what we brought back to you.
And with the offset that's been identified in the motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I appreciate that, that that's, trying to, trying to be responsive. I think this is from, and I'll support the motion, but from my standpoint, that remains an open issue as we think about the, the budget in total. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions. We do have a motion in a second on this, correct? Yes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's or abstentions? Seeing none. Talamontes is absent.
Measure passes.
Oh, measure passes. All right, Talamontes, aye. Unanimous.
So Mayor, we've already done item 20 previously this evening, so we move to item 21, which is authorization for joint application for state Home Key Plus program funding for Mack Road Housing Project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Brian Pedro, Director, Department of Community Response. I was here last week. I am here this week. If we weren't running out of time, I'd be here next week as well to bring a, another Home Key Plus funding opportunity at 4290 Mack Road is what I'm bringing tonight. Again, this is another project to try and increase our housing, try and reduce the mayor's 100... 125 years to less than that, one house at a time. And so this project is a co-application with Gateway Development Group, and we will run through this as quick as we can without, we do have community members here that are in the district that do have some interest in this, so we'll give them their time as well to take this in. So this is Proposition 1 funding. This is the bond measure that was separated out. There was $2 billion of Home Key for our geographic region in the Sacramento area. There was $101 million allocated. The 101 million, Sacramento's geographic region, is Eldorado County, Placer County, Sacramento, Sutter, Yolo, and Duba. And so within that, we have $101 million allocated to us. It is a first-come, first-served. There is a 10% overage that is allocated for our area, so if there, if we do over-allocate, and some other county doesn't use all their funding, it will be shifted to cover anything that's overage in other counties. And so we will be going over into the 10% overage on this. As I said, this is located at 4290 Mack Road. It is a 9.85 acres. We're looking at doing 120 units at this location. I know the map is, is hard to see from up here, but the large triangle to the north of it is looking to be a future park for your district, Councilmember. And the community itself is on the south end of that. We are currently looking at using the, the studio apartments that will be, at current count, and this is not a final count, so we have 114 studios, and we have six two-bedrooms. As we close the finances on this and get our funding in place, that number will adjust a little bit. We're trying to get as many two-bedrooms added to this so we can bring in as many families as we can on this. Again, this has parking stalls, the community garden, the park space, there's laundry, storage, there's a private dog park at the very south end next to the parking, and this will also have a gated entry. The homes currently that we're looking at are built by Boss Homes. It is a Chapter 11B compliant, which is an ADA compliant building, and also Title 24, which meets all of our building codes. As you can see, they have vinyl flooring, windows, steel entry doors, smoke detectors, and electrical panels with the wall heating and air conditioning units in them. A quick overhead of the studio, large enough for a queen-size bed, work desk, closet, has a small refrigerator, cooktop, sink, and then the bathroom connected to it. The, the, the studio is 240 square feet, and then we have the two-bedroom, which is 700 square feet. This one's a two-bedroom, each room having a closet. There's a shared bathroom with the double sinks. There's a small living room dining area there, and then also a kitchen. Again, this one is a 700-square-foot model. The requesting on this is actually 35 million, which is the max for the Home Key Plus for capital costs. We are, again, trying to keep our costs under that 200,000 per unit. Home Key covers 100% if we stay under that 200,000 mark, and we're close to 199, 99. That's what we're working on, final numbers here, to keep this under that 200. The commitment from the city would be 1.5 million in HAP funding. Home Key matches that a one-for-one, and it also matches our other funding that we have committed to this, which would maximize our request for 8.4 million, which gets us the five years, and then the five years on top of that for the matching. This is permanent supportive housing. It is housing. It's not a shelter. It's permanent supportive housing. It will be, tenants will be leasing out the houses. It's 30% AMI, so 30% of your average income, and then the property land will be deed restricted for 55 years to stay at that 30% mark. These sites are staffed with supportive services. I will add on this, so we have two full-time property managers, onsite security for after-hours. There'll be case managers onsite. We have behavioral health services available, and then clients that are connected to all the CalAim services that are also available. And then what we did on this project, Alta California Regional Center made an offer, a proposal, to us. They are looking for housing individuals with special needs, whether that be physical, mental, or behavioral needs. They wanted to be part of the project. There are individuals, because of their disabilities, that do not have the income for affordable housing, and they want to be part of this, so we are adding them to this application. And then, lastly, the city will be the lead service provider on this, and then contract out for the services available onsite. So, lastly, again, part of, as our effort to reduce our homelessness and our unsheltered in our city, this will bring another 120 units to our city. And, you know, we talk about our economy constantly. The more people we get off of our city streets and get them housed, the less impact that it has on our city overall. So this is a win-win for everybody, and that is the end of my presentation. Questions, comments? Public comment?
Public comments?
I have three speakers. The first is Tina Nguyen, Steve Waters, and then Bill Nolton.
Hello again. Okay. I was counting for the time. Okay. So, my name is Tina Nguyen. I own a business next to Mercy Housing. I love Mercy Housing. There is another project down the street for $85 million. I tried to get my staff into that one. Currently, they're filled. However, they told me they're evicting people because those people cannot afford to pay their one-bedroom rent. So, when we spill money into these housing projects, the qualifications for the renters were never really qualified. And I understand we need permanent housing, but if you gave a developer $36.5 million, I promise you, they will build more than 120 units. It is the number of units and the quality of life. The $85 million that was poured into the project that I'm talking about was for solar energy, and I understand we have all those guidelines, but this project for Mack Road is unsustainable. In your own budget, on page 93, you say that homeless services will cost $195 million over the next four years because the governor forgot to give us that funding. This is not sustainable. I oppose this completely because we won't give $9 million for Measure L for students and youth programs, but we spend $46 million for DCR, Department of Community Response, so that they can clean up the encampments, so they can build housing. Yet, if we don't see a return on that investment, we are throwing money at this. And to be reported that we spent $160,000 per person, per homeless person, none of, I know you guys just pass your own raises. You don't make $160,000. We don't have the luxury to spend that kind of money on homelessness at this time. I really oppose this, and I hope that you take into consideration the other tiny homes that have been built, and check and audit to see if those have been, even helped people get off the streets where they're supposed to. Because I can say the one that is on Stockton Boulevard, that money's from X Street, and those people are from X Street. But the cleaning and taking care of the homelessness on Stockton Boulevard has not been done.
Thank you for your comments. Steve Waters.
Hello, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Steve Waters. I'm the CEO and founder of First Step Communities, and I'm here in support of this housing project. I've long been a proponent of tiny homes and cabin communities, both to serve the homeless as shelters, and with some of the newer available models of modular housing for permanent housing, permanent supportive housing also. First Step Communities has long been sharing ideas and proposals for this type of facility, really going back almost 15 years, coming to the council, going to the Board of Supervisors, including bringing a prototype of, of this type of idea and putting it here on the courtyard. We currently operate several city and county cabin communities today, where we collect a lot of data to correlate services rendered and the outcomes, to really understand what works, to best turn lives around, and to house people permanently. Based on those years of results, again, I support this type of housing, and I also strongly recommend that it come with full wraparound services, which I think are absolutely necessary for success. Thank you.
Your comments? Bill Nolton?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Bill Nolton, and I'm with the Mack Road Partnership. The Mack Road Partnership is committed to being an agency of service, and that includes advocating for people experiencing homelessness in a real and tangible way. We have four people on staff with over 75 years of direct homeless services, and that life experience is reflected in our culture. We have two service providers right outside of our boundaries. We have two service providers within our boundaries, and we are looking to add a third on the county side. We support this project, and we are happy to hear that we'll be onsite service providers assigned to this project. Onsite services, such as case management, are a necessary component to the success of the people that will be living there, and to the surrounding community who is welcoming them. If there's anything we can do to push this forward and help you along the way, we're a phone call away. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this item.
Okay. Thank you. Public comment now is complete. Councilmember Maple?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you for the presentation, or, okay, thank you for the presentation. I know that we had a similar one recently. I think that was last week. So much time has gone by. Why does it feel like that was a year ago? Last week. But I really, I want to appreciate you for, I requested that this be at the 5:00 PM meeting on discussion and not on consent, because I really do think that we need to make sure that we hear from the public on this, and that there is an opportunity for folks to be heard. And I want to thank the public for participating in this conversation. But for me, this is, you know, I'm gonna make pretty similar comments to make the last project. To me, it's a no-brainer. One, we're applying for a grant. So we don't even know at this point if we will get it, though I know that you and your team have done everything possible to set us up for success and get us the most points possible. So I think, you know, I'm hoping and praying that we will get it, but we don't know that yet. But, you know, I think that we have a, we have a crisis in our city, and if you look around, just even around the area of, of this very lot, you will find encampments. Along Morrison Creek, you'll find encampments in the area, and, and we hear from residents all the time that they're sad and they're frustrated, that there aren't enough places for people to go. And so the only way that we really solve that problem is not by necessarily building more shelter, not that I'm anti-shelter, but we know that the way that we get ourselves out of it is by having more places that people can call home. And one of the, the key challenges that we've experienced over the last several years is the cost of building housing has skyrocketed. When we look at the cost of building what is deemed affordable housing in our city, it, it has gone up quite significantly, and we're looking at $500,000 or $600,000 a door to build, which, to me, that is unsustainable at some point, and we need to think outside the box. And that's why I really want to thank Gateway and Urban Capital for, for being creative and saying, "Okay, well, are there ways that we can utilize state money and apply for grants, and utilize pre-manufactured homes, and tiny homes, as you might call it, and keep those costs down?" I mean, building this for around, less than $200,000 a door, that's, that's not really happening anywhere. And so, hoping that we can get this grant and pull this off, this, this might be a model that could be used from other jurisdictions all over the state and beyond. And I know that we can do this because Sacramento has always been a leader in this front, and we, we showed that with our progressive housing element and, and general plan updates that we recently did, and now with this. And so I just want to talk about the facts here, because I know it can be confusing. We have a lot of different programming throughout the city. Under your leadership, Brian, we, we do operate shelters. District 5 has the X Street Shelter within its boundaries. But we also, this is a housing project. This is a, this is a place where people will be housed in homes. They will be paying a portion of the rent, 30% of their income, which is actually similar to our, our model that already exists under our housing voucher system. So if you have a voucher through SHRA, the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, you're, you're renting an apartment for 30% of your income right now. It is, it is a very similar model. And we're doing something else really great. If you, if you talk to any one of those folks at this dais, or people in my district, you'll know, one of my biggest pet pieces, all of the empty vacant lots in my district, they go unused for decades, and that often are attractors of other things that people do not want, like illegal dumping. And so I think what we're doing here is, is creative, because we're, we're solving the cost issue, $200,000 a door. We're creating opportunities for people to get off the streets directly into housing, and we're, we're taking a, a lot that has been vacant for decades and turning it into an asset for the community. Also love that it has a dog park. Have to say that. As I joke, as I've joked with Brian, I don't have a single dog park in District 5, though it sounds like this one won't be public. But I'm, I'm really glad that, you know, should we get this grant, that the people who live in that community will get to benefit from it. I also want to make a couple other notes, just based on comments that I've received. So you did bring up Alta California Regional Center. So, so those units, that organization will have services onsite for the people who will be living in those units, who have either developmental disabilities, physical disabilities, or otherwise, right?
Correct. Yeah. And that's, that's what that package is, is that they need some space to house those individuals and provide the services specific to their needs. So they will have their 100% on, on board.
Yeah. That's great. Because one of the concerns I did hear was, well, you know, we're gonna build this housing, and we'll have people who, you know, potentially have serious needs, and we can't just have them living in a home without those supports. So we know that those supports are gonna be onsite, as well as the other services that are also gonna be a part of that package for folks. So, for me, this is, this is a no-brainer. It's very exciting. It's an opportunity to, to turn something that has been vacant and unused into something beautiful, and all the while, solving one of the most important issues to the people of Sacramento, which is more places for people to go. And one last thing I didn't note, but I, I think is important to mention, is that this is gonna be pulling, initially, we'll be pulling directly from the surrounding community, right? So this is also a promise to the neighbors in that area, that we, we're gonna make sure that we're going to people who need it in the surrounding area, people who are camping along Morrison Creek, or camping along Mack, Mack Road, we're gonna go there first. We're gonna say, "Hey, you have an opportunity to come here," and then we'll work our way out. And I think that that is a fair, a fair thing for the community. So I just want to thank you, and then I will be making a motion to move this forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to, to second it with some, some direction, if the, if my colleague is willing to add the direction to the motion. So first, I just want to thank the three speakers who came today, and in support and in opposition. I share concerns, actually, from both sides, and so just really want to say thank you for being here today. But I will be supporting this project and providing some direction, also sharing my rationale why I'm gonna be supporting yet, supporting this project. So I just wanted to kind of uplift, two weeks ago, we actually brought a similar proposal to this council, and it was a Home Key Project in District 2. And there was actually a call to action from Councilmember Dickinson, that we not only do this in D2, but that we make an effort to make sure that geographically we're spreading this out. Now, this project in particular is in D5. It used to be in District 8 until it was redistricted, but it is literally on the border of District 8, District 8 and District 5. And so, you know, as you know, I have a shelter in my district, district as well. I have the Metta View Navigation Center. Councilwoman Maple has the X Street Shelter. Roger, we don't need to say, Councilmember Dickinson already knows all the shelters and the issues in District 2. And so I want to add on to the call of action from Councilmember Dickinson to my colleagues, who may not have a shelter, who may not have a Home Key Project, and that we also, that collectively, this is a collective responsibility, and hoping that my colleagues who do not have a shelter, do not have a Home Key Project, also steps up to make sure that that happens in their district. My position is that I support more affordable housing, permanent supportive housing, in particular, a really vulnerable community. I know in District 2- I know in District Two, when that project came, it was for seniors and for this project in particular, it's also for seniors. Is that accurate?
It's adults and families.
Okay, so that's great. Really important, I think that's, it's really important. One, I know that I often drive by Mack Road through there. We see encampments actually on that site all the time. So I actually think it's really great that we're going to activate the site if we get the dollars from the state. And so, again, Brian, I'm going to ask you this question. I asked this when we considered the District Two project, but, and Councilwoman Maple mentioned this as well, but can we guarantee, because my residents always ask me this, can we guarantee that we'll do our very best to ensure that residents from District Five and District Eight surrounding that area will get first choice to ensure that we actually, that they're in the queue for first lots for housing?
Right. So when we apply for the Home Key, in Home Key, we specifically pulled out a section, Section 505, and it allows for an alternative coordinated entry system, which means that we can set up our own entry system as long as we're meeting the requirements of our local COCs, coordinate entry, looking at our most vulnerable and grabbing our most vulnerable, which allows us to use our own system and grab people from the geographical area.
Great, that's awesome. So if you are a resident in my district, just know that we have control over whom goes into that community in particular, so that's great. Another question I have, because I heard from a public speaker regarding eviction, I think that's really important to address because what we don't want happening is that we have these tiny homes and then families can't afford, even if it's like 30% of their income. Will we have a process in place if we ever get to that eviction process? I know that SHRA does their very best to ensure that they don't get to the eviction process and they help the families to be on a repayment plan and so wanted to make sure, because this is something kind of new that the city's taking on. It's always been under SHRA, so I want to make sure that we have the capacity at the DCR level, at the city level, to support these families if they get to the point where they can't pay the 30% because it's incredibly tough. And so do we have system in place to make sure that we can be a safety net for that?
We do. There is, these projects are, there's multiple permanent supportive housing projects out there and there are cases where there's evictions after multiple attempts to try and, you know, keep them in their housing. That's number one, we're trying to keep them housed. We have a eviction process for, it would be for anybody that is getting evicted from their property right now, this would be no different. It's another housing, though it's a permanent supportive housing, it's still a housing project within the city. So it'd still fall under the same requirements of being evicted.
Okay, so I appreciate that there's going to be multiple attempts to ensure that we capture the family before there's an eviction. So it brings me to my next point, which is a direction that I have, right? I had share in two weeks ago that for projects like this to be successful, and you heard from some of the public speakers, that the onsite services is of absolute key. And the fact that it's actually families is even so much more critical. I share a story about a former G Parkway, now the beautiful Phoenix Park, and how we have to work so hard to ensure we got onsite services to turn that community around. And I don't want that to happen. I don't want us to, you know, set a community up for failure, but to set it up for success. And so my, you know, my recommendation is I know that the city will act as the RFP in terms of the provider onsite, aside from the allocated for also. But I would, you know, really encourage us, especially because it's families, to make sure that, you know, we are seeking and doing outreach to community-based organization that our residents trust. So I'm going to just throw out some names, you know, Ms. Jackie Rose. I know they work very close with the Macro Partnership. The Macro Partnership also has incredible youth programming as well. I mean, they're just right around the corner and so I don't know how the RFP process is going to work, right? But I do think ensuring that we have a trusted, community-based organization that's already working with families in that neighborhood, that's trusted, is going to be of utmost importance. And so that is really my recommendation. And then one last recommendation, because you did go to the Deerfield Mesa Grande Neighborhood Association, which thank you so much, because we weren't able to do a fuller fledge community meeting, so we asked Deerfield Mesa Grande we could basically present. And what I heard from my staff was that, you know, many of the residents were very receptive. But one recommendation that they had was that they really want to be part of the process. So even after this grant process, for example, the RFP process would be great if there was a neighborhood resident that was part of the panel for the RFP, right? And so making sure that community is truly part of that process will be important for me if I am to support the motion on the table by Councilwoman Maple. And so those are my recommendation for this project and I am excited for it. I hope that we're not setting it up for success, but we got to do everything we can to build more housing. We get phone calls all the time in my office, right, that folks need places to go and if we don't have places to go, then folks are living on the street and we know that the longer they live on the street, the shorter their lifespan and the quality of life, right? But it's got to be a balanced approach. And so with that, I will second the motion if my colleagues accept those directions with the motion on the table.
Happy to accept.
Great, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Dickinson.
I just wanted to thanks, I just wanted to express my appreciation to Councilmember Maple and Councilmember Vang for welcoming this application and to Brian, you and the staff, everybody involved in putting this application together. I know you've expedited it and so I want to add my thanks for doing that. The only other, the only other thing I would say is maybe a dog park for the project we approved a couple of weeks ago.
Noted. Councilmember Gara.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I just wanted to note and to say that the Home Key Projects, at least in Sacramento, I don't, I can't vouch for other places, they work. The first Home Key Project was in District Six with St. John's and we've seen the success of the families who've gone through there, the individuals have come in and now have their own professional career and on their way to an outcome. And that was a family-based Home Key Program, similar to what we're attempting to do here. So it's, you know, I'm happy to say that District Six had a good operator and a good start with the Home Key Project and I expect that same level of outcomes for the other Home Key Projects.
Yes. Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'll wait till you finish.
No, I just, I just wanted to say, based on all the great things I'm hearing about the Home Key Program, I'm going to get more aggressive in District Seven as far as looking for a partner and looking for land in order to be, bring that kind of a project to District Seven. So I've heard the cry for us to spread it around, spread the joy around and the love around and I'd love to have one of them in District Seven. We just got to find the land to be able to make it happen.
Sure.
We'll talk about that one-on-one.
Thank you. I'll try to wrap this up because I know we have several more hours after this with our budget. But I think the big picture here is this is state money that if we didn't apply for, would go to some other city.
Correct.
So we have a massive issue to address in housing and homelessness and why wouldn't we apply for this? And so I'm all in and I applaud Councilmember Dickinson for stepping up last week to talk about his district in the face of uncertainty with oversaturation already. And I applaud Councilmembers Maple and Vang for identifying this corner of Sacramento in their respective areas, well, in one, but across the street from the other, to, and I challenge our other council members to do the same because this needs to be a fair share approach. And this is housing, but it focuses on people who are just homeless. And I appreciate the comments that we need to make sure that it's affordable, but, you know, people who are formerly homeless that get into the shelter that go somewhere else and get housing after that, even if you get on the list for SHRA, you pay a third of your income for housing. So having 30% of your income paying for this, I think, is the standard procedure for housing for those super, super low-income individuals who are formerly homeless. And then lastly is that we've been bemoaning, I've been all over it, that these pure projects with the permanent supportive, like Tina Nguyen talked about on Stockton, it's insane. That's $500 to $1 million per unit and we just can't afford that. It's great for the people who get called up, but like, there's way more people who are literally camping across the street from your restaurant, Tina, who we don't have anywhere to go. And we need to find way more cost-effective places to build and develop these. And this is spot on. And this and the micro villages that we're doing in companion with this is the future to address this issue in Sacramento. So thank you. With that, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any no's or abstentions? Hearing none, passes, unanimous vote.
We now move to item 22, which is fiscal year 2025-26 proposed budget deliberation and council direction.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members and members of the public. I promise this is the last time tonight. You're going to have to listen to me and we will keep it brief. So tonight, your council is continuing your budget hearings and really as we start to do that, we wanted to provide just a brief summary of what we discussed last Tuesday and maybe some considerations for council based on what we heard of staff. So there were some information requests primarily about vacancies, but some others as well. And we heard some general concerns and sentiments, both about vacancies, our long-term fiscal picture and the need to invest in technology and efficiencies. So for the information requests, we did include some additional supplemental budget information items, 13 through 17, to address those questions. Just on the vacancies in particular, one thing we do want to reiterate is we are already including a vacancy savings factor in the budget, which is about $6.5 million and is based on historic position churn in vacancies. And also that vacancies, you know, departments either want to fill them or sweeping them may have a service impact and departments can speak about that. After our discussion on last Tuesday, we did run an updated vacancy report. We took out all of the vacancies we were eliminating as part of the proposed budget and then we asked departments to identify what vacancies are funding in non-budgeted positions, which are reimbursable, right, grant-funded or things like that, which generate revenue. We don't want to eliminate parking enforcement officers, for example, they bring in more revenue than they cost, and which are seasonal or temp employees. Some departments also said to us, but not all, and we didn't ask for it, but said, hey, we have a offer out on this position or we're having final interviews on this position. And so we included those where they provided them to us, but it's definitely an undercount. And so I just wanted to note that there. During your discussions last Tuesday, we heard a few areas of council concerns, so the elimination of youth pop-up funding, the fire prevention fees, which you just heard, the increase in senior program fees and then skate hour, skate park hour reductions, which we feel we can restore with our contractor. We also heard some budget balancing strategies on the list that were specifically identified by council members to consider and they're listed there. You know, an OPSA vacancy was mentioned if one arose. One did recently arise last month, so we are, we do have it listed in the next slide just so you know what it is, but it's a new vacancy and I imagine the department probably is thinking about filling it. And we also costed out that partial implementation of the city attorney strategy that wasn't used. So we wanted to identify some additional resource options we discussed last week as well as some restorations that council had identified to potentially consider. I know there are probably other items council members may raise tonight. So I did want to call out the Measure L, you know, as council took an action today to hear that on June 10th, there is $1.5 million that is recommended to go for the library project where we had allocated general fund. So that would free up one-time general fund of $1.5 million if council approves that recommendation. And council could always make a restoration contingent on that approval as part of the budget process if you wanted to. And then we costed out the treasurer's revenue, which council just took an action to use some of that to offset the fire prevention fee reduction to protect small businesses, some of the Level One Appointed Office vacancies that were mentioned, the OPSA vacancy and then the CAO reclassification. For the restorations, the youth pop-up funding, that would be $1.3 million that was used as a reduction strategy. Because it is a youth program, it is eligible for Measure L. However, obviously, they were not on the list of, in this round of applications. So they could apply in the future if council wanted to reinstate it temporarily. The fire prevention fee reduction, that's what you just heard, that's to get to the 75% cost recovery for a small business. It costs $175,000. The senior fee, if we were to reduce those senior fee increases, that would cost $40,000. And then, you know, again, the Compensation Commission took an action to increase costs by $126,000. So those are just some things to consider as you deliberate tonight. And that concludes our presentation and we'd like to pass it off to council and we're happy to answer any questions.
Well, public comment first. We have...
Forty-six speakers.
Forty-six speakers. So that's...
An hour and a half.
That's an hour and a half. So... Oh, wait one second. We are going to allow the 47 speakers to participate, but we're altering your time to one minute, 60 seconds or less. Yeah, 60 seconds or less or if you can choose not to comment and he just, okay. 60 seconds or less and outbursts will not be permitted and if you continue, you will be asked to leave. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to read off a few names. Maria Beltran, Olivia Vasquez, Lucero Soto, Maria Garcia. And I'm assuming some people may have left, so please let me know your name. Maria Beltran.
Can Lucero Soto go first?
Pardon me?
Can Lucero Soto go first?
Sure.
Good evening, good night to our mayor and to our city council. My name is Lucero Soto, community organizer with Sacramento Act. We are here today because we are fully supporting the Right Free Program. This is an essential program that is not just benefiting our local school district, but is benefiting a lot of the resources that you all are already spending into our community. We're glad that this year and we hope that you're able to approve the recommendation of using the $250,000 for Measure U. However, I would like to say that we would like to partner with both our mayor, our city, our county and our local school districts because I don't believe that it is just a responsibility of the school district or just the city or the county. This is the well-being of Sacramento County and city and our students are the future. So we hope that we can partner together to find a sustainable funding that will go long term so that not we're here every year advocating for this. And I'm also here in support of the Fuel Network, who has done a lot of great work for our community. Many of you were in a press conference in front of Trinity supporting immigrants, so I hope that that also reflects in your...
Thank you for your comments, Maria Beltran.
And she will do it in Spanish and I will translate.
So you will have one minute for English and one for Spanish.
Hola, mi nombre es Maria Beltran, padre y líder con Sacramento Act. Estoy feliz aquí. Están recomendando usar fondos para el programa Right Free. No es solo un programa para escuelas, pero para que jóvenes tengan acceso al recursos que ustedes ofrecen, trabajo y citas. Queremos trabajar juntos para encontrar una solución de largo plazo. Es toda nuestra esperanza que los jóvenes estén seguros. Hello, my name is Maria Beltran. I am a parent leader with Sacramento Act. I am happy to be here and for you to approve the recommendation of using the funds to fund the Right Free Program. It is not just a responsibility for schools, but it is also our responsibility to make sure the young people have access to their resources, many that you offer, and jobs and health appointments. We would like to work together to find a long-term solution to fund this program in our community. It is our hope that our students are safe in our city. Thank you.
Gracias.
Next speaker is Elvia Vasquez.
Hi, my name is Elvia Vasquez and I'm a community organizer with Sacramento Congregations together. I'm also here to express my support for continuing the funding of the program, which is the free transportation for our students. We know that this investment is our, for our students is vital and not just only for attending to school, but also doctor's appointment, working, volunteering programs, participating in sports competitions, training outside the schools. So some of the students have the option to decide to use this program, but some other students, they only, is the only option, especially for brown and black students, low-income families. Our children... students, low-income families. Our children, students, are part of this community. The, we as, and parents also are part of this community, and we also contribute financially and positive impacts in the, in the city, and also for the future.
Thank you for your comments. Maria Garcia, then Dustin Smith.
She's gonna do it in Spanish, and I'll do the interpretation.
Thank you.
Estimados miembros del Consejo Municipal, mi nombre es Maria Garcia. Soy madre líder con Sacramento Act. Me dirijo a ustedes para expresar mi apoyo a la financiación continua del programa El Transporte Gratis para nuestros estudiantes RT. Sabemos que es vital esta inversión en nuestros estudiantes, y no solo para ir a la escuela, sino también a citas de doctor, trabajo, voluntarios en programas, y participación en competencia de deportes o entrenamiento fuera de la escuela. Algunos estudiantes tienen la opción de decidir usar este programa. Para algunos estudiantes, esta es la única opción. Nuestros hijos, nuestros estudiantes, son parte de esta comunidad, que nosotros como padres, y también ellos como estudiantes, aportan ganancias para la ciudad. Le invitamos a que pensemos juntos para nuestros jóvenes niños como parte de esta ciudad, a verlos como parte de la comunidad, y aún más en estos tiempos de tanta incertidumbre por los impactos políticos que ellos y muchas familias están pasando. Por favor, aprueben los fondos para que este programa de transporte de nuestros estudiantes en nuestra comunidad. Gracias.
My name is Maria Garcia. I'm a parent leader with Sacramento Act, and I'm here, I'm here also for you guys to pass and, the funds for the free transportation for our students. Like, I also said, the students have options. Many others don't. As, we have parents that are working to jobs, and our students are part of this community. Students contribute to the city also financially, and so we invite you to think together about our youth, our children, as part of the city and this community, even more so in this time, so great uncertainty due to the political impacts that they are, many families are experiencing. Please approve funding for this transportation program for our students and our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Dustin Smith, then Claudia Rios Manzo, then Nicole Zanardi, then Maida Ars Moreno.
Hello, I'm Dustin Smith, president of the Sacramento Police Officers Association. I want to start by running through our conditions with our staffing. Just a few years ago, we had 804 warm-bodied police officers working for the city. We now have 639. In a city our size, we should have no fewer than 1,050, and in a capital city, it should be closer to 1,200. From a staffing standpoint, we are bleeding out. Any cuts, including vacancies, put our communities at risk. We are a city looking to grow. You can't grow a healthy city without core services. Those services start and end with the police department and public safety. At this point, with these numbers, if we continue at this rate, we will drop below 600 officers at this time next year. That's the equivalent of a fully defunded police department when you look at staffing. Saying that we should cut funds from the police budget and redirect them to other places is naive at best. This jeopardizes our police department's violent crime reduction team, our human trafficking...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Claudia Rios Manzo, Nicole Zanardi, Maida.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. My name is Claudia Rios Manzo. I'm the program coordinator for the Sacramento Fuel Network. I'm here today to urge you to please include the Sacramento Fuel Program in the city's annual budget. This decision, this decision would ensure that many of the most vulnerable and underserved in our community continue to have access to critically needed services, especially at a time when immigrants' rights, livelihoods, and safety are under assault. The Sacramento Fuel Network is a coalition of over 80 local organizations, including nonprofits, religious orgs, law school immigration clinics, government partners, pro bono attorneys, school districts, and many more community partners. Fuel Partners provide deportation, defense, representation, community education presentations, and mental health services to Sacramento city residents. We also provide trainings to service providers so they can have the most up-to-date information and materials about constantly changing immigration policies to share with the communities. Fuel Partner organizations bring a wealth of experience and expertise in serving immigrant families. Sacramento has a proud and...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Nicole Zanardi. And Mr. Bliss, please do not disrupt the orderly conduct of these proceedings by continuing to speak out from the audience. You are in violation of Chapter 5 of the City Council Rules of Procedure. If you continue, you'll be ordered to leave the meeting. Do you understand this warning? Thank you. Nicole Zanardi, then Maida Ars Moreno, Angel De La O. Is Nicole here? I don't see movement. Maida. Angel De La O. Karen Duñas. Following Karen is Alice Montez, then Lorenzo Vasquez.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Karen Duñas from La Familia Counseling Center and Fuel Partner. We're here today to urge you to continue funding for the Fuel Network, as this is a critical lifeline for our families, our community, and our youth. As a partner, we've seen firsthand the support, not just in legal representation, but the collaborative network that fuels allow, that fuel allows for referrals. It's important that our community feels like they have a place to go, and that we have this network. So, cutting funding would not only harm those individuals, but it would weaken the fabric of our community. Immigrants are our neighbors, our coworkers, and our classmates, so ensuring they have the support and network to keep these families together makes our city even stronger. So, we're here today, again, to urge you to not to cut people's lifeline and preserve the funding for the Fuel Network. Thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you for your comments. Alice Montez. Following Alice is Lorenzo Vasquez, and Brandon Perez Hall.
City council members and mayor, my name is Alice Montez Christopher, and I'm an advocate with SEIUUHW. We represent healthcare workers and patients across California. We are urging you to include continued funding for the Sacramento Fuel Network, who provides essential services such as legal services and mental health services to a very vulnerable community, or undocumented community. I'm also here as president of FEMDMS of Sacramento. We focus on equity for women, children, families, and marginalized communities. Overall, we cannot emphasize enough the importance of Sacramento Fuel Network. They provide access to so many important programs that if taken away, will be extremely detrimental to so many individuals across Sacramento. In a time when the federal and state government are looking to cut access to important programs that undocumented individuals rely on, we ask you to lead on this space, in this space, and continue the funding. Thank you so much.
Lorenzo Vasquez, then Brandon Perez Hall, then United Way.
Hello, council members and, Mr. Mayor. My name's Lorenzo, and I'm from, I'm a McClatchy student, from, a high school McClatchy student, and I'm just here supporting the Sacramento Free Ride program, RT program. Personally, I see so many people from my school take the, you know, the light rail, and it's just surprising, like, how many people fit on there, honestly. And if you guys were to take it away, I don't know, you know, what it looked like. It'd be really weird. I also have, like, friends that, like, personally, they, like, I have a friend specifically that carries, like, a big cello, and he has to, like, walk otherwise home, and he lives in, like, Pocket, and that's, like, you know, that's a huge walk. And I just hope you guys keep the program. And personally, I use it because I, like, you know, I love biking, and sometimes it's late, and I have to otherwise, like, you know, bike in the dark. So, the light rail's really useful for that, or the train, I mean, sorry, bus. Thank you for your time. Have a nice day.
Thank you. What grade are you in?
I'm in 11th grade.
And it's Lorenzo, right?
Yeah, Lorenzo. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon Perez Hall, then United Way, then Jasmine Alope, Taylor Caata.
Evening, mayor and council members. My name is Brandon Perez Hall. I'm a Sacramento resident, state worker, and lifelong skateboarder. I would like to suggest that you please consider opening the 28th MB Skate Park so that it may be accessed by members of the public without staff present. Doing so would allow the city to not need to pay for staffing, and at the same time, to increase the public's access to the park. However, if the park must be staffed, and you elect to staff the park with private contractors, please require that the contractors agreement be temporary, and that the option of staffing would turn firstly back to the city. I'm concerned that private contractors would lead to reduced access for the public, and that if we allow private contractors to control the park, we'll be unable to get control back. Thank you all for your time, and that concludes my statement.
Thank you. United Way, then Jasmine Alope.
My name is Adro. I'm here on behalf of United Way, California Capitol Region. Thank you all, mayor and council, for hearing public comment from each person who will testify today. Also, want to continue to lift up the message that we must supplement and not supplant, and this includes both Measure L and Measure U. Want to make sure that we continue to invest in our youth and young people, and do as much services as possible to support them. I'm also a member of the NEOMIA Emerging Leadership Program, Class 15, and proud member, and also want to lift up continued investments in the Ride Free RT program. Appreciate your investment in that. I know many of our class came to meet with you all, and we appreciate you hearing from us, and you'll, and I also stand in solidarity with my classmates, who will, you'll also hear from today. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jasmine. Following Jasmine is Taylor, our trustee, Caata.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Jasmine Alope, and I am here on behalf of the NEOMIA Emerging Leadership Program. Tonight, I want to thank the city for including $250,000 in the budget for the Ride Free RT program, the Fair Free Transit program by SAC RT. This investment is a strong signal of your commitment to youth mobility, educational equity, and environmental sustainability. While we are grateful for this critical investment, our research and stakeholder engagement also made one thing clear: one-time funding is not enough. Ride Free RT is a lifeline. It supports economic access, reduces absenteeism, and advances regional climate goals. Given the cross-sector benefits of the program, the responsibility to fund this should not fall solely on the city or school districts. Everyone who benefits from this program must play a role in sustaining it, including school districts, municipalities, regional agencies, civic and corporate stakeholders, and both the city and county of Sacramento. We urge the city to participate in broader conversation about a sustainable multi-year, multi-partner investment strategy, so programs like this aren't...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is trustee Taylor Caata.
Good evening. I'm Taylor Caata. I am on the SAC City School Board, speaking in my individual capacity tonight. So I'm joining with many other people who are here tonight to address Ride Free RT, which is such a valuable program for our youth. This helps our kids get to school, to community college classes, to jobs, and generally to get around the city. This advances shared interest between the city and school districts, and also builds transit riders for life, which is supporting this council's priorities around reducing greenhouse gas emissions and making our streets safer and more walkable. I want to thank you for including $250,000 for Ride Free in your draft budget, and I urge you strongly to consider making sure that stays in the final budget. I also wanted to take a moment to thank Councilmember Wang for your comments last Tuesday on Ride Free, and for investments in youth generally. I agree with them 100%, and I hope your colleagues listen to you. And as we just heard, I would strongly like to request that we all work together, that that not, that this not be something that we consider during budget cycles once a year, but that all of our stakeholders who are involved in this program and care about the values that this offers to our community and our kids.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Kyle Christopher, then Alicia Madsen, then Jose Morales.
Good evening, mayor McCarty and city council members. My name is Kyle Montez Christopher, and I am a constituent of the vice mayor. And I'm here to urge you to include funding for the Sacramento Fuel Network in the 2025-2026 budget. Sacramento has been a sanctuary city since 1985, and this program provides essential services to one of our most vulnerable communities. Now is not the time to threaten access to this program, as this community is under attack. Now is the time to reaffirm our city's promise to, as Mayor McCarty once said, "Stand up for these communities and work to protect their safety and security." Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Alicia Madsen, then Jose Morales, then World Relief.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Jose Mesquita Morales, vice president of the Latinx Young Dems of Sacramento County. We are a young democratic organization that focuses on uplifting the Latinx community across the Sacramento region. I'm here to express our support for the Sacramento Fuel Network. SAC Fuel provides free legal, educational, and mental health services that uplift and support our immigrant community. In a time when our immigrant community is being attacked at the federal level, I urge the council to please include the Sacramento Fuel Program as a part of the city's 2025-2026 budget to ensure that many of the most vulnerable and underserved in our community have access to much-needed services. Our values are truly reflected in the budgets we put forward, and I hope we value our immigrant community as much as we say we do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Alicia Madsen. I didn't see Alicia. So I have World Relief, looks like T. Oswald, and then Violetta Caldera, and Jamison Parker.
Hi, city council. Thank you for having me. My name is Colin Ruon. I am with World Relief Sacramento. We are a local refugee services agency. I am here to encourage you to sustain Fuel Network funding. For our agency, we have used Fuel Network funding for direct legal aid. We've used it to do know-your-rights presentations, community outreach, and actually wellness programming for Afghan refugees. So with federal funding being severely affected by the current administration's policies, the Fuel Network has been a lifeline for us. So we ask that you continue to sustain it, and that an investment in the Fuel Network is an investment in the future of Sacramento, and it is showing that our new refugee neighbors are just as welcome as the people that already live here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Violetta, and then Jamison Parker.
Good evening, council members. My name is Violetta Caldera. I'm also with World Relief, and I'm here to advocate for a budget increase for the Ride Free program. A lot of our families have significant barriers when it comes to safe and reliable transportation. Most of them are overflowed to multiple schools across all of their children, and sometimes they have to choose between ESL classes, employment, or getting all of their children to all of their respective schools. So we really ask that you consider increasing the budget, and so that we know the most vulnerable families in this community are able to get all of their children to school. We've been advocating for this across school districts and different organizations for the course of this entire year, and we really believe that this program is one of the most sustainable solutions to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Jamison Parker, then John Vignoci.
Good evening again, Jamison Parker. I want to just appreciate everybody that's been here all day as well, so thank you for your commitment to the city. I don't envy the position that you are all in, as you look at how difficult of a situation you are from a budget deficit perspective. With that, I do believe that the budget that you have all negotiated, and that staff has put forward, is balanced and well thought through. Specifically, we appreciate the continued focus on core city services. The number-one priority that we hear from our 2,200 businesses and over 1,100 property owners is public safety. Ensuring that we maintain that level of service that keeps our community safe has to be city-focused. We, again, appreciate all the work that you continue to do, and ask that you support the budget that's in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. John Vignoci, then Stephanie Duncan.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm here in support of the police department. This is, of course, a function of our government, for the city government, and it's really important. I was here last week talking about a project in D-2, and one of the things I kept hearing is why don't we see more investment in D-2? And one of the things I think we also hear in D-2 is how do we get more police, because there's a lot of crime and other issues, life safety, public safety issues there. And so, I think the right questions to be asking about the police budget are how do we fill these vacancies, not necessarily, I think, what the SAC B was saying about, you know, how do we spend the vacancy time on overtime? I think we do have a crisis here where we're losing officers, people are retiring and aging out of the workforce, and we're not able to attract the young talent that we need. And so, as a housing developer, obviously, I think we benefit from the $3 million, $0 impact fee fund. I'm probably gonna get in some hot water with my peers here, but I'd say, cut other stuff before you cut the police department. Cut that, because housing investment, it's very difficult to secure the necessary investment if you don't have clean and safe streets. Thank you so much.
Your comments. Stephanie Duncan, then Vito Scromo.
Good evening, mayor and council. Stephanie Duncan, I'm a renter in District 7. The priorities of every city should be to maintain essential services, picking up trash, having clean water, sewer services, maintaining roads, and most importantly, community safety, which means funding police and fire. Without these essential services, the city ceases to function properly. Even with a budget deficit, these essential services need to be prioritized. We should never be in a place where we are even discussing cutting funding to the police department. Seventeen years ago, in 2008, the Sacramento Police Department had 804 officers. Through budget cuts in '08 and '11, many positions were eliminated, where today we only have 641 officers, but the city has grown in population by 50,000 people. How the city prioritizes the safety of its citizens is by every member of the city council, first and foremost, openly supporting police. SAC PD needs all the funding that they need to provide city services and keeping us safe. Please prioritize citizens.
Thank you for your comments. Vito Scromo, then Karen Kay.
Mayor, City Council, I'm here to support the Police Department. I've been involved in budget analysis for the state for over 35 years, and there's two elements we had to take into consideration. One is short-term impacts, long-term impacts. According to the RAND Institute, which is a nonprofit, nonpartisan institute that does research on police and long-term effects of police vacancies, according to them, this is nationally recognized organization. For every vacancy that's lost, there is a $355,000 impact to the organization that lost that police, let alone increase in crime, property damage, and then loss of business. I want you to seriously consider the long-term impacts of losing vacancies with the Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Karen Kay, then John Morales.
Last week, as you were discussing proposals to eliminate police vacancies and cut overtime, a drive-by shooting was unfolding just a few miles away at CB Circle. One person lost their life, over 100 shell casings were recovered, homes and vehicles were riddled with bullets. At that same meeting, the mayor asked Chief Lester what the consequences would be if we eliminated police vacancies. Her response was immediate, and she said it would be catastrophic. Sacramento is in the midst of a public safety crisis. We need safe neighborhoods. We need city leaders who are going to understand that public safety is not optional, it's foundational. According to the FBI, which provides national data on police staffing levels based on population size, the average ratio is two sworn police officers for every 1,000 residents. With the population exceeding 500,000, Sacramento should have at least 1,000 officers to meet that standard, yet we are currently at about 640.
Thank you for your comments. John Morales, then Alyssa Lee.
I'm against defunding the police. In the last 16 years, Sacramento's population has surged by 11%, but sworn police patrols have decreased by 7%. This year, the police put three bad transients from my neighborhood in county jail. Ryan Doe is a meth addict who lived in alleys near McKinley Park and is known for vandalism. Ryan is the one who broke all the windows at Kitchen Table Store on Alhambra. His record includes 24 felonies. Thomas Doe is a homeless meth addict who lived across from Planned Parenthood. Thomas is a burglar of the Good Bottle Shop on J Street, where he broke all the windows. Thomas has 12 felonies and eight counts of burglary, one vandalism, and one for meth. Kristen Doe lived at the East Street Underpass and was arrested for public indecency at the McKinley Park bus stop. In 2022, he beat a woman who was putting her child in the car at McKinley Park. Kristen has four felonies, including-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Alyssa Lee, then Troy Sankey.
Good evening, or good night, Council. My name is Alyssa Lee. I'm a resident of District 4 and a member of Strong SAC Town and All Volunteer Community Group. I want to thank the Council for retaining the funding for the transportation team. I'm here to point out what a big role our Built Environment plays and our development pattern in our costs and our potential for savings. Building low-density, car-centric development will never make enough in taxes and fees and what it costs to maintain for infrastructure and core services. So let's stop ignoring our obligations for maintenance and think about density and active transportation as cost-savings investments. So my requests for this budget: account for unfunded capital projects in the five-year budget projection, incorporate more funding for Ride Free RT, and adopt Councilmember Vang's proposal to retain at least $1.8 million in funding in youth programs. By shifting over a modest number of vacancies from the Police Department, we can avoid layoffs and keep these valuable programs. True safety comes from healthy, connected, and well-funded communities. The safest communities have beautiful tree cans-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Troy Sankey, then Keon Bliss.
Hi, my name is Troy. I live in District 4. I recommend reallocating police vacancies to solve today's problem, but realistically, the scale of our police vacancies does not match the scale of our real debt. Our net financial position of negative $4 billion has been growing for over 20 years. Police are just the tip of the iceberg. We need to adopt a more sustainable approach to city building, one that is sensitive to the needs of the people and not their cars. An approach that focuses on tax density over absolute tax revenue. An approach that is sensitive to new infrastructure liabilities. An approach that fosters a large community of small developers building granular urban environments. I'm talking about the Strong Towns approach. We can lean into programs that encourage a culture of walking and cycling, which is a great way to advocate, to activate streets and enable more community policing in lieu of city policing. We can finance loans, we'll send up card dependency and end the suburban experiment. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Keon Bliss, then Madeline Noel, then Colin Ruane.
The current budget proposes as much as 66% of our discretionary spending on police and fire. There are at least 180 police vacancies, 118 of which have been vacant for at least one year, some 35 of which have been vacant for over two years. SAC PD values these vacancies at a total of $12.9 million. The year-plus vacancies alone are worth at least $9 million by my count. The Police Department is trying to scare you from even considering making adjustments to these police vacancies, and they're doing so by threatening to fire, lay off, or lay off, at least 30 people, all of whom they say are recruits, but your own budget documents don't even match the exact number two. I can prove that, but I don't, I only have a minute of time, because your mayor doesn't really care that much about the public dissenting about this. And it doesn't feel like many of you do either, and that really sucks. That's bad for democracy.
Thank you for your comments. Madeline Noel, then Colin Ruane.
Thank you. On behalf of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership, we thank Interim City Manager Milstein and Chief Lester for their commitment to public safety. With everything at hand tonight, I must be direct: public safety is the bedrock of a thriving downtown. Any proposed budget cuts to the Police Department directly threaten our ability to attract and keep businesses, customers, and residents. Sacramento is at a pivotal moment. Employees are returning to office, residential developments are taking shape, investments are revitalizing our waterfront, and we're heading into a busy summer with heightened nightlife and major events. All eyes are on Sacramento. If you've ever enjoyed a Friday concert in the park or Wednesday farmer's market, you can thank the Sacramento Police Department, as we fundamentally depend on them for the success of these events. Without their support, these annual traditions and critical economic drivers simply cannot happen, because when people don't feel safe, our collective progress is jeopardized. We ask that you not compromise our city's stability. We share your vision for a thriving central city and public safety.
Thank you for your comments. Colin Ruane. I have 15 more speakers. So Colin. Colin, Dan Tibbetts. Following Dan is Devon Strecker, then Alicia Yoffe, then Eliza Horowitz.
On September 3rd, 2021, my sister Mary K. Tibbetts was violently murdered in her home in the Land Park neighborhood of Sacramento. The person who allegedly killed my sister was a beneficiary of Props 47 and 57 and the state's policy regarding Zero Bell. Obviously, there are many issues regarding criminal justice at the state level of governance, and in the case of my sister, an outright failure. But there was also a failure at the local level of governance. The person who killed my sister was loitering at Land Park the week before he killed my sister. During this time, he committed a handful of crimes and was being searched for by the Police Department. The police did the best they could with the staff they had available, but unfortunately, it was too little, too late, and a few days later, he decided to break into my sister's house, which turned out to be fatal for her. If state government had put criminal justice ahead of social justice, maybe my sister would still be alive. But if the Police Department had been appropriately staffed, maybe my sister-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Devon Strecker, then Alicia Yoffe.
Thank you for your time. I'm Devon Strecker, Executive Director and a resident of the River District and District 4. I'm here to ask for two things on behalf of our businesses and residents. First, please don't cut funding for the SMUD, MOSAC, Museum of Science and Curiosity is very important for the development of our children's future. Secondly, please do not reduce funding for public safety. Specifically, I'm here to support our Police Department. None of our businesses or residents are asking for less enforcement or less police officers on the street. We spend over a quarter of a million dollars on security every year to try to keep the River District safe, but there's just a number of calls that we are not allowed to respond to that require police presence, so I urge you not to remove the vacancies and continue to fund the Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Alicia Yoffe, then Eliza Horowitz.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name is Alicia Yoffe, and I'm a resident of District 4. I understand that the Council has a fiscal responsibility to pass a balanced budget, but we should not compromise on our values of equity in trying to balance a budget. Our budget needs to invest in youth and the most vulnerable in our community, especially those most at risk from the cuts to federal funding and immigration enforcement. Programs like Fuel are essential to the health and well-being of our community and for the safety of them as well. Community safety includes youth programs, homelessness services, infrastructure maintenance, and these things must be funded. As shown by many previous comments, policing doesn't necessarily, policing and imprisonment does not necessarily result in crime not happening or reduced recidivism. We should also consider creative strategies, like shifting our fiscal investments from national and international corporations and investing in local banks and green banks to build the city's tax revenue and build Sacramento's climate resilience. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Eliza Horowitz, then Amira Almaldah.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I'm Eliza Horowitz. I live in District 4, and honestly, just gonna say, yeah, copy everything that Alicia just said, because that was really well said. Heavily believe that our safety actually comes from the way that we invest in our communities rather than the recidiv, or sorry, imprisonment and policing of those communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Amira Almaldah, Amala, and then Amira Kot. I don't see Amira, so... Amira, Almaldah, Amala?
Amira.
And your, Amira Kotum?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I wish we had the device that projected the, to the, to the screen. But my name is Dr. Amira Kot, and I'm speaking as an equity consultant closely following the city budget deliberations. While I appreciate the city's effort to increase revenue, decrease expenses, and eliminate vacancies, I believe we are missing a bigger issue, which is the need for a structural reform in the budget. In February, the Budget and Audit Committee, during a Budget and Audit Committee, the budget staff shared a chart showing that $250 million out of the $550 million budget of the city goes to the Police Department. This is 45% of the budget. Yet, in the suggested chart, all departments are facing an equal 15% cut regardless of their share in the budget. Most US cities-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Sandra Bettencourt, then Stephanie Bucknam.
Sandra Bettencourt from the Ben Ali Community Association in District 2. I'm here tonight to urge you to do what you were elected to do by the people that you represent, and that is to ensure the safety and quality of life in the districts that you serve. I urge you not to eliminate any positions within the Sacramento Police Department, and also to enhance services within parks, including additional park rangers, as well as maintenance folks. Because without the city Police Department and park rangers, youth programs that you're encouraging for elimination of violence with youth can't happen. So please, do what you were elected to do, serve your people, and protect Sacramento.
Stephanie Bucknam, and then Kao Yi Tao.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Stephanie. I lead youth skate nights for Project Lifelong at 28th and B, and tonight I'm here to ask more questions. I'd like clarification about what exactly the City Council is voting on regarding the skate park. Last week, Assistant City Manager Ryan Moore stated that the skate park remains open with the same hours. Instead of a city staff attendant, a contractor is an attendant. However, the budget proposal language says, "reduce internal hours of operation and discontinue internally operated open hours, and utilize contracted instructors for all programming." So will our open hours remain the same or not? If not, what do reduce operations look like? And what happens if the city can't find contractors to cover the same level of open access? FYI, it took us five months to finalize our contract with the UPSY last year. If you vote to reduce or discontinue internal staffing and operations now without the contracts in place and are not planning to keep the skate park staffed in the interim, you are effectively closing the skate park to the public until at least October, and that is only if you have someone on deck ready to start the contract process tomorrow. Please do not vote to reduce or eliminate internal staffing until UPSY has contracts in place to ensure continued open access to all ages, all skaters, and-
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kao Yi Tao, then Tao Vang.
Good evening. I think it's shameful that we are still cut to one minute, especially with such an important topic as the budget, and that's why the racial equity work is important, because we need to revisit processes as these. I heard a lot in the audience about fear, about public safety and crime, and I think the math isn't mathing, because the police budget is the highest it's ever been. So obviously, if we are looking at it from a data perspective, and we should, as folks in governance, is that we need to look at the data, and the data shows, actually, I would love to see the data that more policing leads to less crime and prevention of crime. We need to redirect the police vacancies to actually protect departments that are supporting youth and preventing crime. We are looking at, we should not be cutting 1.3 million in youth violence prevention. We should not be cutting Fuel. We should not be diverting funding from the Office of Diversity and Equity. This is just ridiculous, and so I hope that we put our people first, and-
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Tao Vang. I have five more speakers. I have five more speakers. Tao Vang, then Magali Kincaid.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council again. City Council continues to scrutinize funding for youth parks and community enrichment and the Office of Youth Development and Engagement. The PD Department continues to carry 194 vacant positions. I think we have to question why, and this might be a larger question in terms of cultural issues, but that's a larger, larger picture. At the same time, you're proposing 1.3 million in cuts to youth violence prevention right before summer, when these services are going to be needed the most. I think Councilmember Katie Maple, you mentioned that as well, too. Youth violence prevention program is also public safety as well. Programs that support engaged youth people, reduce crime, build stronger communities, and saves lives. Finally, cutting funding to the Fuel Network and the Office of Diversity and Equity sends the wrong messages. These programs serves some of the most vulnerable communities, including immigrants, refugees, and community college. Equity requires investment and not erosion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Magali Kincaid, then Mo Kashmiri.
My name is Magali Kincaid, and I'm an immigration attorney with Opening Doors at Sacramento-based nonprofit that supports undocumented people, refugees, and survivors of trafficking on their path to stability, self-sufficiency, and belonging. Opening Doors is part of the Fuel Network, and I'm here to say thank you for the support of the Fuel Network. With your support, the network has been able to empower and reunite countless families. I have witnessed the positive impact of the Fuel Network in light of the unprecedented funding cuts and harmful, dare I say, criminal federal policies. Your support is more important than ever, especially when many of your constituents, our neighbors, friends, community members, are being criminalized, scapegoated, and targeted by this administration. I urge you to renew and continue to support and possibly increase the Fuel Network's fund-
Thank you for your comments. Mo Kashmiri, Haley Depressy, and then Dion Dwyer is our final speaker.
Mo Kashmiri, District 4. Budgets are statements of our values and priorities. It's a moral decision. Don't balance the back, the budget on the backs of our public servants. Don't balance the budgets on the backs of our community services. The values of the Sacramento I know is one that knows that we need to value and have more funding to address homelessness, more funding for holistic public safety and prevention, more funding for youth services such as Ride Free and MOSAC, more funding for immigrant services like Fuel, more funding for after-school programs for adjustment to climate change, and more funding for parks and community services. How can we do that? We can do that by looking at all the revenue sources to fund the service- We can do that by looking at all the revenue sources to fund the services we need. We could increase the business gross receipt tax to make it more progressive by getting rid of the $5,000 annual limit that benefits the biggest corporations. We could look at single-use plastic taxes, soda taxes, cut the Assistant City Manager position of Howard Chan, and cut big positions we can't fund anyway. We need you to lead, and instead of making-
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Haley Depressy, then Dion Dwyer.
Good evening. My name is Haley, and I'm a resident of District Seven. I'd like to begin with urging the Council to account for our unfunded liabilities and prioritize long-term accounting in the city budget. We are consistently spending more than we make. One year of tightening our belts to balance the budget will not solve the problem we're facing. When we don't account for our maintenance needs in developments or in our five-year budget projections, we are lying about the true state of our city's finances and the true cost of what we're choosing to build. We know that maintenance, maintenance costs don't go down, and they certainly don't go away. Looking to the immediate needs of this budget cycle. We want youth and family programs to continue. We want to keep the skate park at 28th and B fully operational as it is, and we want to see ongoing funding for the transportation safety team. We want the city to adopt transparent, honest, and accessible accounting and to invest in bottom-up public safety that comes from thriving neighborhoods, stable community services, and safe and productive streets. If shifting vacancies is the way to do it, I fully support doing it.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Dion Dwyer.
Good evening, Dion Dwyer at the R Street Partnership. We'll be asking for two things with John Vinoki. We are big fans of zero-impact fee. As you know, CADA is a big developer on our block, and we can't do that without those zero-impact fees. Additionally, we have concerns around the elimination of the open positions. As you know, Sacramento Police Department is important for us and our clean and safe budgets. We spend close to a quarter million dollars on that annually. I was here this morning at 11:00 AM where we heard about the business operation tax and increasing that. You need to know that public safety is a cornerstone of economic development. We cannot continue to increase taxes on businesses and then cut services. So we'd ask for you to please keep those positions. Thank you.
Give you your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our, our, our public comment. We, you know, heard the public loud and clear the last few weeks, and I know council members have laid out some priorities. So this is our chance to, to put some of our ideas and, and fingerprints on the final plan. We won't take a, a vote on the budget until the 10th of June, but tonight I know some council members are going to lay out some ideas. So what, what I'm asking you to do is very clearly articulate what you're looking to accomplish that's separate from the budget before as proposed by city staff. We will take notes, and before the night, we'll go around and, and I'll look for if there's consensus on your idea. Then we'll direct city staff to incorporate that in the plan that comes back before, first the Budget and Audit Committee, and then the Council for a final vote. So we're going to keep a, a tab up here if there's any adjustments that you want to propose, and then we will probably reconcile for a few moments and then come back and try to flesh out where the Council is on those items. I, I, I want to just talk about one thing, and I know the public spoke about this tonight, and that's our youth programs. And I, I think our budget is greatly expanding youth programs based upon our Measure L plan that we're going to adopt on also the 10th of June. But as well as, I think it's important to note, and maybe the city manager for the record, or maybe you Pete can clarify, that, that if the, if the Measure L plan comes forward as it's been proposed so far, what would that relate to the, to the suggested 1.3 million dollars in adjustments, cuts to the youth violence programs?
Yeah, sure. So, thank you, Mayor. So if Council approves the Measure L plan, those, you know, youth pop-ups are not included as, you know, options. They weren't, they didn't apply. However, the city did apply for one and a half million dollars of funding for our library projects. So if Council approves the Measure L recommendation, that would free up one and a half million dollars of one-time general fund. And then in the future, the, these youth providers could apply for future rounds of Measure L funding.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that we, that if, if it goes as we're talking about so far, we won't have those cuts for those youth prevention, youth violence prevention programs. But more importantly, we'd have other programs that are funded as well through the Measure L proposed expenditure plan. But anyway, I'll let the, the council members engage and make any proposed suggestions you may wish, starting with you, Councilmember Veng.
Thanks, Mayor. All right. So as requested last week, Mayor, I know that you requested at the May 13 City Council that we share our budget recommendation, and we're doing it here today. So I'm going to repeat some of the items that I mentioned last week, but I'm going to be a little bit more specific so that staff can take copious notes, and we will figure out if there's a consensus on the diet. So first, I just want to comment on generating revenue options. Again, like I shared last week, I'm not opposed to some of the revenue options on the table, but I, again, want us to be intentional on how and whom we increase the fees on and ensure that we're mitigating the most harm to our most vulnerable communities. I do look forward to reviewing the draft business operation tax language that I know my colleagues on Law &amp; Ledge is working on, and I look forward to seeing it when it comes to the full Council for consideration. And again, large, large corporations like Walmart only pays $5,000 to do business in the city, and they need to pay their fair share to support essential services and infrastructure that our community dearly needs. So I'm going to focus on four areas that I'd like the Council to protect in this budget. There are many items in this budget that I want to protect, especially in our parks and youth. But I know that if I did that, we'll be here all night, and so I just got to fight for a few things that I think are of utmost importance for me and what I've heard from my constituents in the community. So the number one, the first piece, and, and I'm actually suggesting a proposal that shifts approximately 1.8 million of available vacant positions to support and resource staffing for the four areas that I am invested in and passionate about, what I've heard from my constituents. So the first, which I think there will be a consensus on this Council, is reinvesting in youth and family programming. That's 1.3 million that's currently on the proposal to be eliminated. Again, a continuing investment in young people in the city is essential to building a more equitable city, especially during challenging budget years like this one. And even though we passed Measure L, I'm going to say it again because we had this at 2:00 PM meeting, Measure L is less than 1% of the budget, right? And for me, it's really important that we don't supplant critical youth programming, but we're actually expanding more funding for our young people in the city. Earlier today, you also heard, I know this is going to come back on June 10th, even with option number one scenario, we heard the dire needs for violence prevention, which is critical. That would include the 1.3 million. And so, as you heard, summer is upon us, and it's so important to make sure we provide safe spaces, meaningful opportunities for our young people, particular those in underserved communities. For me in particular, when we eliminate programs, when we defund youth programs, we're not just cutting budgets, but we're actually cutting and limiting the potential and shortchanging our young people in the city. So that's the first piece, and I'll talk a little bit where we can get funding to support that. I'm just going through all of the four key areas that I, I would like the city to protect.
Can I just interrupt real quick, Councilmember Veng?
Yes.
Yeah. So can you just specify specifically, like, number one?
Yeah, so number one.
You want to take vacancies from what? You didn't, you didn't say.
I didn't say that because I'm going to go, I'm going through all my four items, and then I-
At the end, you'll-
Yep, yep, I'm going to have all that, yes. All right, number two, stay the course. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. The current proposal eliminates one full-time office staff from the Office of Diversity and Equity. Racial and economic justice is really important in the city. It's always been one of my highest priority. Again, in December, this Council passed a resolution supporting the racial equity resolution, and we're beginning to implement that work with the community, with care holders. We originally had three positions in this office, and I believe they were in the process of hiring, but it was on a hiring freeze because of our budget, and we only have two staff right now to operationalize and implement this work. We are in a budget deficit, and in particularly, racial equity needs to be embedded in everything we do. And I actually believe now more than ever, because we're in a deficit and especially during budget cuts, we need to assess harm of the reductions on our most vulnerable community and ensuring that we have staff capacity to help build out that capacity internally with our departments is key. We've made a lot of progress on our SCORE initiative, and so I think it's really important that we save, protect this one position in the Office of Diversity and Equity. The next item is care-not cuts to community center. The current proposal eliminates 13 positions within the community center division of our parks. That's about $300,000, not much, but many of these critical positions actually ensure that staff can actually provide high-quality programs for our seniors, our youth, and our families in the community center. The reduction in staffing that's actually proposed would actually significant a lot of the programming in our Department of Youth, Parks, and Community Enrichment. I want to just name that I know staff is doing everything they, they can to be innovative, to streamline, to figure out if staff can double task on items, but it's going to be a strain and at a time when we really need our community center to be, to be, to be fully staffed, it's important that we actually protect these 13 positions. And then lastly, the Fuel Network. Our immigrant communities, you heard from many of the residents, are, many of our families are, you know, under attack. They're facing threats and discrimination, and there's always uncertainty every single day. Many live in fear of separation with, from their loved ones, and in these challenging times, it's more important than ever for the city of Sacramento to double down our support on our refugee and our immigrant families and making sure that there is this legal support that, that's provided for them. And so those are the four areas. Now, here are my budget adjustments because the mayor wants to know, so I'm going to lay them out. And before I lay them out, because many of them are coming from Sac PD, I just want to make a few notes. So I want to note that, you know, last week I had mentioned PD vacancies. I noticed that it was not on the presentation. I don't blame staff because I wasn't specific, but I will lay it out today. But I do want to say, you know, for especially the public commenter that came today and what I've heard in the community, right? I, I want to say, you know, for those that say crime has gone up, I just want to share with you that that's simply not true. I mean, even our police chief have said on record multiple times that crime has gone down, so I just wanted to, to name that. The reality is that our dollars are tied up, which makes up the largest cost of a department. So I heard from a woman who said, hey, don't cut PD and also don't part, don't cut our park maintenance. Well, the majority of our budget is tied up in PD, so if you want to keep park maintenance, you're going to have to figure out that funding from somewhere else. And so to me, I, I just want to share that in the history of the city of Sacramento, we have never defunded the police. I've never even used that term, right? We've never defunded the police. If anything, we've increased the police budget by over $100 million and growing, and I'm simply requesting for some vacant positions, not all, right? And so just to save these four critical areas that I think it's really important for our communities. And then I'm going to say, because I'm going to go into my budget recommendation, I'm going to remind this Council every single time we're in budget conversation, is that in 2020, the City Council passed a resolution defining, redefining public safety to move beyond traditional services. Yes, absolutely, public safety includes police and fire. I'm not going to argue against that, but it also includes our parks, our youth center prevention programs. That is part of public safety to the mayor and council. And like I shared, if that is not the definition and the value of this council, bring that resolution for our vote, and let's revote. If that is not the definition, the values of public safety for this city. And so here are my budget recommendations. To fund the DI, the DI position, the DEI position in the Office of Diversity and Equity, shift the investigator position in the city attorney's office to save one of the FTEs. I believe that position is about 103K, but I'm going to go through a few more vacant positions to supplement the full cost of that position. For the, for restoring our community centers, the 307,000 and the 1.3 million, I'm going to go through a few items that I think we can do some cost shifting. First, I, I want to acknowledge that, yes, there was $1.5 million set aside for the library, and it's, if it gets funded through Measure L, we'll have 1.5 million on the table for youth programming if my colleagues so choose to do that. That's great. But what I will share with you is that if we decide to go that route, which is great, that's still one-time funding, and we're going to be back here again, and we're going to have to be, we're going to have to force that conversation about where do we want to cut in order to continue youth programming. And it cannot just come from Measure L, because as I shared with you, Measure L only makes up less than 2% of this budget. And if 2% of this budget is what you want to spend on young people when they make up one-third of our city, then that's your priority, but that's not my priority as a council member. So first, so in addition to the CAO, the city attorney's office, here are a few items that I would like the Council to consider. First, I just want to say, before I make a request to delete two vacant position from the police department, the Sacramento County Sheriff has a marine unit that already patrols our waterway. The city of Sacramento is part of the county, and we should be receiving that same service from the county. So I'm requesting a deletion of two vacant position from the marine unit. The patrol area ranges from the Sacramento River north to downtown Sacramento, and county actually staffs that position, their marine enforcement, 365 days a year, and these positions are vacant. And so I'm requesting to eliminate these position, the two position. The next item I like to eliminate, I like to delete three of the 12 vacant position, again, these are vacant positions, from the Impact Team. This is, I understand that PD goes out with DCR, but I believe that, you know, we're only taking three of the 12 vacant positions, and that can cover, that, that is enough, that's about 433K, enough to cover the community center staffing and to add the additional cost to the admin position for the Office of Diversity and Equity. The other item that I like for us to consider is to eliminate the ShotSpotter program. When the contract expires in June of 2025, which was also on the reduction list from March, and I want us to redirect that program, it's about 500K, to our, to the items that I listed. The Police Review Commission in 2022 also made this recommendation as well, and last February, Chief Lester noted that 12 FTE unit assigned to respond to ShotSpotter was already eliminated. So it actually makes sense for me to eliminate that. So these are some of the example I have on the table. I'm not even touching the mini vacancies, but I believe that if we start with this, it's, it's a good faith effort that the city is doing everything they can to protect those critical programs that I mentioned. Many of the programs that we are funding, again, I'm going to say, is one-time. SAC Ride RT, for example, it's in the budget, but it's only for one year. So-
So just, just to clarify, because I know a lot of public commenters have come on, that's in the budget as an ongoing allocation-
Absolutely. And so I'm just, I'm bringing that up because SAC Ride RT and the 1.5 million, if we so approve and use the additional funding that was set aside, if, if Measure L goes to the library, that's still one-time funding, and so we're going to be back here again. So I'm going to say this, because I said this last week, before we eliminate any critical funding for youth and families, we lay off any staff who relies on their paycheck to provide food and housing for their loved ones. City Council, we have to have the courage to reallocate some of these vacant position from the police department to protect services that directly supports our working families. I think choosing to keep these unfilled position while cutting real people and taking away resources from children and families cannot be how this city leans into our values. And I'm also going to say, so many of our families are struggling right now because of this administration, and we shouldn't balance the president's broken economy on the backs of our most vulnerable families in the city. And so I encourage my colleagues to make budget decisions driven by real people who need our help in this critical moment and not based on fear. And those are my recommendations for the budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you real, thank you. Before we go on, just a quick little pause.
I need some, okay. Can I?
No, just real fast, you, real quick.
Yeah.
So can we ask another clarifying question, Councilmember? So for the Fuel Network ask, was that 500,000?
500,000, yeah.
500,000?
Yes, we're, so we're going to, we're going to have our, hold on a second. We're going to have, you threw it out a lot there, I appreciate your perspective, I just want to make sure we articulate what you're asking, word for word, line by line, the dollar amounts. We're going to have our city manager go back through your requests, your, your four, to make sure we, we properly got it down.
So I have the youth programming, which is L1-22. I have the Office of Diversity and Equity FTE, which is L2-7 for 113,000. I have the Fuel Network for a half million. And I'm sorry, I don't know where the community center FTE are, and I've been-
That's L1-41 for about 300,000.
Is it 307?
So a total of about 2.2 million in additional costs.
That's what I wanted to, 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 to. So I'm understanding from our Director of Youth Parks and Community Enrichment, that these are FTE, they don't need to operate the community centers. This is cleanup. So is that correct, Jackie? So the restoration isn't achieving anything operationally?
Yeah, that's okay.
It would be great to be able to take off the list because then you could save some dollars. So if we can confirm that?
Good evening, Jackie Beach. I'm Director of Youth Parks and Community Enrichment. That is correct. We, of course, want to preserve as many vacancies as we can, but these positions in this particular proposal, there are 13 of them, three program leaders, and 10 recreation aides that continue to be challenging for us to backfill at this point. There are other strategies I would certainly love to prioritize over this one.
So, Councilmember, if you still want that on your proposal- So councillor, if you still want that on your proposal, you certainly can keep, you want to keep it there?
Yeah, absolutely. And if there are other, there are other like park maintenance, for example, we can swap that out, but I just feel that even though we have offered those position, as I shared, it's still going to be a strain on our community center. We know that, right Jackie? Can you confirm that? Obviously you have, right, that if these are eliminated, there will be a strain.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I would, I would just say that, like many other departments, the, the strategies that we've put forward, while we, we don't anticipate them impacting current service levels, they will not allow us by putting these recommendations forward to expand our current levels.
I'm going to ask you to timeout real quick because I don't want to mitigate her ask. You have an ask, we're not going to, we're not going to walk you out of it.
Thank you.
So we just want to make sure we properly understand what you're asking. So there's four, there's four asks of you, we're still trying to reconcile if your vacancy swaps add up to the amount, so city manager wants to ask the follow-up.
Yeah, so I just, I found the marine unit is NUL 3-6 and it's 261,000. So you've proffered an investigator marine unit, three from the Impact and PD ShotSpotter, right, which is 106 plus 261 plus 433 plus 510. So that's about a million three. So you've proffered 2.2 million in, in additions and a million three in reductions. So we're about 900,000 short in having this be a balanced proposal.
Okay. I, I have a few more items. I was just listing a few, but again, I'm laying that out and we'll see if there, if there's appetite from my council to, from the council to, to-
Okay, we'll, we'll go back to them.
Yeah, absolutely.
We may, we may-
I have a whole list of vacancies that I like to, I can, I can add. It's, I have a list, but I'm laying those out as some of the examples because I can lay all out, but there may not be an appetite from my colleagues because they may not even want to touch the PD vacancies.
Yeah, I, let's not debate it and I'll just lay it out there and then we'll go back at there. And we may have to, I think some of the council's not following this, if we can potentially put this on a list succinctly and put it up on the screen so we can watch the beautiful sausage-making process live. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you.
So I wanted to actually start with a couple of questions, if I may. And so Pete, I wanted to look at the residential parking item, which is R-13, and the, the net there to be realized in revenue is 961. Can you explain to us how, what, how you get there?
I can phone a friend, Matt Ironman, who can go through the, the calculations. But really, at a high level, it's, it's, it's a program we already have and it's charging a fee to get cost recovery. But Matt, Matt and Stacy can walk you through it.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Stacy Hoover, Mall Parking Manager. So the residential permit parking fee that we are proposing is a cost recovery fee. So right now we're spending just over a million dollars in administrative costs to run our residential permit parking program.
So, if I may, today was charged zero?
Correct.
Okay. So, so what does it mean the charges will be for people to get to cost recovery?
So right now it'd be $120 for a residential parking permit. For low-income residents, it would be 50% off, so $60 per, or per year for a residential permit.
Okay. And that you calculate would get you to the net of the 961?
Correct.
Okay. Stay, thank you.
No problem.
So, Mayor, and for discussion purposes, I would like to put the 961 on my restoration list.
Okay.
And I'll get to how we get there. And actually, given the work that's, that's been done, I, I don't have other restoration requests, but I do have another question. And that question, Pete, goes, goes to NUL 2-20, which is a labor offset by shifting, it looks like, cost to, to an ARPA grant. Can you, can you explain that one to us?
No, Tom, in the Community Development Department wants to, yeah, wants to give the more detailed explanation.
You didn't choose, and what I'm really asking is you didn't choose that as a, as a reduction strategy. And so I'm wondering, is there some, is there some particular reason why? Because that, that looked like something, if, if it's actually transferable to the ARPA grant and doesn't have other adverse consequences, could-
Well, I think it would limit the ability of, of the team to provide services in the future, but Tom, if you want to speak to it, it's the increase of labor for the business compliance unit, night team, overtime?
Yes, this was basically to help deal with the fact that the demand for services for our night team, which is largely working on code enforcement issues for our nighttime economy and helping with entertainment-related activities throughout the city, but especially in the central city, has incurred significant overtime costs. And so this would be a way to offset those costs, but it is a, a one-time resource, so it wouldn't provide a permanent, ongoing reduction. So I think the reason that other options were pursued is that those were ongoing as opposed to this one, which would be a one-time reduction.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. I, I understand, but I would, I would offer that as, since we do things that are one-time and we do things that are ongoing, as a one-time potential source of, of, in your resource options chart. So beyond that, I, I want to express my appreciation for what you've done, both in terms of the additional resource options and the, and the restorations that you have included in your, in your chart. I am confident, I am confident that this council will approve Measure L expenditures, which will include the, the library funds. So that 1.5 million, I am comfortable treating as a source for restorations. I also came up last night with a, with a list of, of about 16 vacant positions that I thought were reasonable to look at for elimination from the budget. Some of them, some of them you, you captured in your restaurant, in your resource options, so, so I haven't had time to reconcile at all. So I will just, I will give you the list and the amounts. And I recognize the challenge I've got is getting to 961.
This is to address the residential parking?
Yes.
Yes. Just follow it.
Although, although what I came up with actually totals 2.118 million, so.
Act of Eliminating Vacants.
I'll just give you, because I, I think it would be appropriate to review whether these positions have some other reason why they shouldn't be eliminated. But several of them are out of the direct reports that, that it looks like you've incorporated in the appointed office vacancies and the partial CIO Level 2 reclassifications, the OPAH vacancy, so. So, let me just, let me just read them and we'll go through them. So the first is the investigator at 119, and I'm going to give you the round numbers rather than the exact dollars, about 119,000.
Can you say which department they're from, Roger?
I'm sorry.
Can you, can you, am I muted?
City Attorney.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's in the, yes, that's in the city attorney's budget right now.
Yeah, say the, say the department and the, and the classification.
Two senior deputy city attorneys, there are five on, on vacancies at the, in the budget document, so I, I didn't, I didn't slice them all. That, that's 241,000.
Which, which one, I'm sorry. Say, say again, I didn't hear.
Senior deputy attorney, and I, and I took two out of the five that are currently vacant. Suzanne may have different, city attorney may have different information about that. So that's why I'm, I'm just giving you these and they're subject to obviously comment. There's administrative analyst in the city clerk's office that is vacant, that's 127,000. I'm rounding down on everything, by the way. There's a, a couple deputy city clerks that are vacant, I suggested one at 102,000. There's administrative analyst in the city manager's office at 127,000. There's a media officer vacancy at 188,000. There's a special program manager, and I'm sorry, I'm not sure, I'd, I'd have to track where that came from off your vacancy list, but that's 164,000. There's a treasures analyst, and I think you must have picked that up, so that's 137,000. I, I wish we could get more animal care technicians, we've got a bunch of vacancies there, I, I identified one at 86,000. A program manager at 188,000. A neighborhood resources coordinator, too, there are several vacancies, I just selected one at 116,000. There's IT support specialist, one, again, we've got multiple vacancies, I selected one at 137,000. An IT support specialist, two, again, multiple vacancies, I took one at 156,000. There's several city council executive assistants vacancies, I just took two, I can't remember the total number, at 222,000. Now, with all the, with the rest of the numbers, that, that comes to 2, 2,118,429.
Only 900,000.
And I've got more.
So I'm going to-
So I would also put on the table, there, there's an auditor survey for 34,000. And frankly, you know, on, on a personal level, we do surveys, we spend a lot of money on them and we don't get much in response. So I'm not sure the cost, the value of, of doing, I wish we could, got better response. There's city council food at 25,000. So those are, those are some items out of that, maybe, maybe there's 961,000 to be found.
Okay. So I just want to clarify what your proposal is, because we want everybody to say what they don't want to cut and how they pay for it. So, so you say, well, you're not cut, you don't want to increase, you don't want to make the increases for the parking program for residents, 961, and then you provided 2-point-something in million, how to do that. So how do you wish that we give a indicator, how we like your idea with those, with those 2 million, when we only need 900,000?
I, I, I think there's going to be reaction to the suggestions I've made in terms of some of these budget position reductions.
Yes, you know, we're very hungry right now, so we're going to take off the food one right away.
So, that's, I, I mean, between now and, and the 10th, June 10th, or actually the 3rd, I would look for response from staff as to those and figure that out of, out of a couple million-plus dollars, we could, we could find half of that.
The problem though, Roger, is councillor Dickinson, is that, is that we want to give the city staff within the next hour a thumbs up or a thumbs down on your idea. And, and I think we need to know how you get to nine, that hundred, as opposed to-
I'm, I'm giving you more money.
I know.
Can I make a quick suggestion?
Sure. You can put your mic on?
Quick suggestion, I actually don't, I'm not mad at you, Roger. I think if, if we want to have the 961, we just have to, out of that 2.1, find 961. And if there's more, it goes towards fixing the structural deficit, or that doesn't go when we vote on other ones.
Yeah. I just want to make sure that he has a chance, if he wants to rank, for example, of the 2 million, how you get to nine.
No, I'm, I'm with council member Kaplan, that's, that's where I would go.
Okay. Proposing.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can propose all those that pay for the Fuel Network and other ideas, too.
And I know there are going to be other ideas.
Okay.
So, so-
Mayor, point of clarification.
Yeah, point of clarification, councillor Maple.
Thank you. Am I gone? I did not capture all of those, I don't know if the staff did, but what I'm hearing from you and from you is that your proposal is that to cut all of those positions, correct? Okay. So if you could, is there any way that we could get a list of those?
Yeah, we're trying to, we may just take a little break before we come back and have some direction here. So we'll try to make sure that budget staff have them all and we'll put them up, we'll put them up on all these votes, all these positions on the board so we can see it before we make good direction.
And then, and just one more point, I think I heard the investigator position being spent twice already. So I just want to make sure that whatever we put up, that also clarifies where things are, okay.
I'm positive that, that Vangs and Dickinson and Gara's solutions will all overlap.
Thank you.
So we'll have to figure that out, too.
Yeah. Mayor, I think-
Councillmember-
Mayor, can I, can I help, can I help?
No, we'll come back, we'll come back. Councillmember-
Oh, just for processing, so it's going to be easier for you. Like, as Pete is writing this out, I think it might be good to do, like, here are all the council members' requests and here are all the kind of vacant proposals, because I think that's important, it's easier, I'm just, I'm just trying to make your job easier.
Thank you. Councillmember Gara.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this. I'm going to be pretty direct here on, on my request here, and that is, because there is a clear nexus, and that's to move two senior deputy city attorney positions, each at 241, 430, and, and then the balance of the NUR 1 to cover the Fuel Network cost. And to me, one, I, I feel that, that the Fuel Network was actually a product of the city attorney's office. And it's not lost on me that by, by asking for those vacancies, you know, it, it does put a lot of stress on, frankly, a department that has created a lot of support for folks. They've done amazing work through the Justice for Neighbors program. They have gone and protected us, not only this time around, but prior years on, against the federal government. And so, you know, I, I, to me, it's not lost on me requesting these. It's, the work that they've been doing has been critical. But I would, I would like to do my request in this way, that, that the, the, the two positions from that go for this, for a one-time allocation for the '25, '26 budget year and as a direction to the city attorney to re, to include those positions back next year. That, I think, leaves enough space for us to make sure that we're well-equipped in the city attorney's office, come, come back next year. And there was a request, while there isn't a nexus, I, I do support the 119, 431 of the investigator to match the, the, the position in Ami Barnes's shop there, so that we're in that spot. But I do, I do think that there is a clear nexus for Fuel and the city attorney's office. And it is a department that has been deeply invested in the work of the success of that program. Also, we know that there are potential dollars that are both philanthropic and state that could cover this work, those have not materialized. And so with our, you know, it asked that our, our GR division, if Ms. Consuelo Hernandez could follow up to find out where we are on this, to be able to tap into those, that would, that would, I think, alleviate this issue because we'll face this issue next year again. So I'll be direct on, on, I think that that's a one-for-one transfer. I do, now, this is more, throwing more things up on the, on the idea wall as, as my colleague, councillor Dickinson proposed. I do support the, looking at the residential parking permit program and figuring out how to buy that down some, somehow, some way. Folks in Elmhurst, you know, folks over that are in Midtown, renters and others, folks that are, you know, adjacent to, you know, the, you know, St. Francis in that area, who have to, who are using the residential permit program. This is something that they weren't expecting when they agreed to the program. So I do want to figure out a way to buy that down. And when I look at supplemental budget information, item 10, that breaks down the, the monthly vacancies, tables three and four of, and I don't know, you know, Pete, where, where these all land because they're not itemized in this supplement, but in vacancies, tables three and four, there are multiple positions where, where they've been vacant for over 12, 12 months. And this is where I'd like to get some more information, which is, I think, the challenge of trying to do like an up and down- of trying to do like an up and down and write the budget tonight, because the supplement doesn't tell me which department. It just says, you know, administrative analysts. There's four vacant positions that have been vacant for 12 years totaling five, essentially half a million dollars, 507,000. Even if we went down to two of those vacancies, knowing that, you know, there, there's a, there's a purpose why we budgeted those. Two program managers. Even if we went down to one on that, the program managers on the, on table, one of this has them at a total of 324. That adds a, if we went even just down to one, that's 150K.
I suggest that you, so we provided additional supplemental budget information. You have a ginormous packet in front of you.
Yep, I do.
If you turn to like the last five pages, in that, you'll see item 15, 16, which has a new table, which shows it by department.
By department.
Because I think it's much more impactful to understand how it will affect a particular department. And then, when you start talking about cutting a program manager, I would like each department to be able to tell you what's the impact of cutting that vacant program manager.
Well, I appreciate that, Assistant City Manager, but, you know, this is what we were provided until most recently, and what we've been working on, so...
I realize.
To that, to that point, and, and if I've had the, the time to dive, dive into this, and I know this was a product of the last conversation we had about vacancies, and so we got this document, and then it got refined to this document, so...
Keep going towards that further, further down in the bigger package, at the very, very end.
No, I'm, I'm seeing those now here. But, oh, thank you there very much. So I guess I'd like to explore those further. Again, I don't have any direct one-for-ones, but I just wanted to say that, you know, that a couple of these where, where we do have, you know, four, four vacancies that have been out for two, for longer than a year, could we go from four to three on these, so that we're not crippling a department? And again, they're lumped in by classification, not by department.
I think it's hard, Councilmember Gera, unless you's locked down. I think it's difficult unless you say specifically what you want to do, not hypotheticals here.
No, I understand that. And, and I'm just saying, Mayor, that I don't know if we're going to get to that fine point that...
Yeah.
I know the staff would like an answer tonight, so that they can draft the budget for...
Now, what I'm looking to do is, is just get some hypothetical direction, that they can make adjustments and go back to the Budget Audit Committee on the 10th, which can propose as a final vote, vote later that night, so...
I'll give a hypothetical direction here. In scenarios where you have four vacancies of the same classification, or two vacancies, can we survive by going down to one? That doesn't eliminate an entire classification. So that, that would be my, my direction to staff, is to look at those. So here's a good example. I use the city attorney's, deputy city attorney classification. She had, the, the office has, I'll say the office has, five vacancies. But I know that just the natural order of both recruitment and then retention and is, is that we would need three to maintain the office in the work that we have for the next year. So I think it's, it's a balanced approach to reduce two. That's all.
So I, you know, I will tell you, we have a program manager in community response. We have a program managers in community development. We have, and, and so I would want to hear from those departments about what it means to eliminate a program manager, and who will do the work that that program manager had done previously. Because I don't think it's, I know it seems easy to look across the city and say, why can't we just eliminate this? But departments very specifically did not include proposals in their 15% reductions. And I will hearken back to IT, very specifically. We are all sitting here, working on our tech. And every time our department wants to put a code enforcement case through, or wants to approve a set of plans, or wants to run the items that go through our legislative system that become this budget, we rely on IT. So we very purposefully left IT out, as we could, to protect those in order to continue to deliver programs and services on July 1 at a level that we have come to expect when we're trying to already do less with more. So I think that we, without being able to respond back to each of the vacancies identified and identify the impacts of those...
Well, let me just timeout here, because I, I don't want to debate the merits of that the hour's late, and we do need to make a, I guess, a procedural...
Yeah, Councilwoman is a procedure. I move to extend it past 9:30 PM.
Yes, very there. So I, I just want to make sure...
All the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any no's?
No.
Pass is eight to one.
Yeah.
I voted, I voted no.
Okay.
I, I just want to make sure that we can understand what's your proposal. So that's your proposal. Go from four to three. Okay. So are there any more suggestions we want to consider? That's it. So I'm going to propose, do we have everything that we, do we, Councilmember Kaplan, sorry, I didn't see that.
Oh, I can...
Just clarify, I was just going to clarify to your point, the program manager I identified was in community response.
Okay.
One of two.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You have suggestions? Budget suggestions?
I do.
Okay.
Based off my comments, I feel like I just made my comments, but that was actually last week. I believe we actually don't go far enough. So I'm actually proposing no cut, or more cuts, excuse me. And I really don't have restorations, because we're not addressing our long-term structural deficit. So one of my proposals that I would like the council to make a decision on is, I've requested at least we do a two-year budget process. But my request is that on year two, a budget's a living document, and we always have money that falls through, whatnot, but on year two, we get within 2% of our general fund. So right now, our general fund revenue was 847 million. If we got within balancing it within 2%, that's like a 17 million, give or take, which I think starts really addressing our structural deficit. So if we were to pass a budget now, we'd have to say, we're balanced this year, and our structural deficit is less than 2% of the general fund revenue that we are estimating. Does that make sense? I'd like to also include that we have a six-month council update on proposed revenues, or on revenues and expenses, so that after we pass this budget, not that we go redo the budget, but that we get an update on where we are with expected revenues and expenses.
In addition to what we get in the mid-year?
It doesn't necessarily, like, maybe like a workshop, or some, something that if we need council direction to be given, that it, that it can be. Especially if we see, I'd say it's wise with this administration, knowing that we may lose some federal funding and may have to make some additional adjustments, to be conscientious of the next several years that we are facing that. I think it's just smart budgeting. Question. I saw the RFP for security modernization operations. And I saw, Pete, which you sent out on like contracts, we send out RFPs and that we have. I mean, that would be a contract that's 6.8 million dollars a year, over five years, 34 million. What are we doing to save on the contracts that we contract out on? Because I don't see that as part of our budget discussion. And these are not police officers, this is safety and security. And how do we find savings where we contract out? And also, as a council for us to discuss, what is the policy behind that? Do we want to do that full service? I think that's something that has somewhat been missing a little bit on when we do contracting out with such big contracts, is that, you know, the, the council does not see that. I am supportive of the new supplement, the additional revenue options in blue, Assistant City Manager, or Interim City Manager Milstein. I also want to add eliminating the city clerk vacant position, where it's the mayor council assistant, at 72,000. I'd also like to be up for discussion of what both Councilmember Dickinson and Gera brought up. But I'm okay with the elimination of two senior attorneys for this coming year, but not full restoration, that we only bring them back in the modified reclass, we bring them back in the classifications, because she cannot hire senior attorneys, so we bring them in at the entry level more. And that results in the 151,000 ongoing savings after this budget year. So I'd like that 151,000 to continue to go on. I am, want to keep up the elimination of all Level 1 appointed offices vacancies at 280. The OPESA vacancy at 135. I have a question. I saw, everything's all, I don't remember what supplemental budget, but it was this one that had some of the vacant positions. I know that we created more kind of like neighborhood services positions when the redistricting was done, and there were some areas that didn't have quote-unquote "council" coverage. Are, under the community development total, there are neighborhood resources coordinator one and two, two positions in each category. Were those positions the ones that were created specially for that?
That's community response that they're under?
Uh, community development total.
Right. They, they don't have neighborhood resource coordinators, only community response has them.
Okay.
I can answer that. Those positions were in the mayor's office, and it was in a project. And so once that time has, like, once the redistricting closed, those positions were removed, so they're no longer available.
Okay, that was, that was up in, up in the air, but good to know. On those positions, I think part of, like, would we look at, there's two in each, a reduction of one in each, and what would that do or not do, but should be part of a, of a conversation, because that would be 95,001 and 116, when the other, if we only eliminated half of them. I do not support eliminating anything in public safety, fire, police. But I really think, oh, and then on Roger's idea, actually, the auditor's community survey, if you take the time to read it, is very thorough and very informing, but maybe it's an every-third-year?
Yeah.
Community survey.
So Councilmember, can you help us and just focus on your proposals?
Yep, I'm going there.
Thank you.
I'm going there. And then I did have a question, because, Roger, I wanted to just understand a little bit more on your, on your, the neighborhood parking. Mr. Ironman, do you have a section? So with the proposal to create the city residential parking permits, where does that money go, or are there restrictions on that money?
So, good evening. Matt Ironman, Director of Public Works. So the, the cost would, would go back into the program. So right now, we're, we're covering the cost out of the parking fund to, for the counterstaff, for the administration of the program currently. And what this will do is, is pay for the service that's being provided. I think what's important here is that we're asking for a recovery fee of $10 per month, when the market bears about 200, $250 per month in, in our, for parking. So I think it's a relatively low cost. We do have built-in for low income to ensure that not everybody's going to be affected by it.
So what areas would this affect?
So how many zones do we have?
So it's citywide, sorry. Sorry, this would be citywide. We have roughly 30,000 participants in our residential permit parking program right now, or 30,000 permits that are issued.
Now, do we know if all of those 30,000 have the ability to have a included in their residence parking spot, or, or are those required to park on the street? Like, do they have garages? Do they, if they're an apartment, do they have underground? Do we know?
So it's a mix. It really is. Some of these have no garages, no driveway. Some of these do have access to full-blown parking structures, and they're getting free parking permits to park on the street.
Okay, because, and then, do you know if these permits, because I used to live downtown, are these being sold for other people to use for parking, potentially state employees?
We have seen that in the past, and we do enforce that. If we notice that there is a permit on a vehicle that it doesn't belong to, or if we think that it's being used for commuter purposes, we do enforce that, and we actually will void the permit.
Okay. Thank you, I wanted to get clarification on that. Mayor? That's it.
Okay.
Yes.
So the, the 2.66 in the blue chart on the additional resources inclu, is inclusive of the 151, I believe, because it's...
Yes, but it, but it doesn't have the extra of the 482. So you want to take four, I want to go with Councilmember Geras, so first year, B482A60 is saved.
Right, but if I just use this chart, I'm, I'm not double-counting, so I think...
Yeah, 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 yes.
Then plus a clerk 72, neighborhood resource coordinator one at 95, and neighborhood resource coordinator two at 116.
And then potential whatever savings on every third year for the community survey?
Right, it's 34,000, so it's not, yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to ask for inclusive, like, our auditor also take participation, or we can take 10 grand out of our traveling conference. Because I think as a family, we all got a, we all got to weigh in together.
Okay, are there any new proposals to put on the table? Seeing none, we are going to take a recess. A 10, 10-minute...
Can I go down there with them real fast?
Recess, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, please.
So staff, please pause our video stream while we resume the meeting in about 10 minutes.
Yeah, I put that on Instagram and told us.
Mayor, we're... Mayor, we're live streaming, if you'd like to reconvene.
Here we are, we're reconvening our budget deliberation. So councilmembers, here's what I propose. We are going to ask our, our city budget team to put up, so we can all see behind us, the proposals from the four councilmembers. I'm going to ask councilmembers, if they would like, to give their feedback on some of these issues. We heard already from the councilmembers who proposed them, we know where they stand. But there's other councilmembers that want to weigh in, speak now forever, hold your peace. I, I'm not going to be looking for a vote or a thumbs up on these items. I'm going to hear your commentary and bring about reflection of our shared values, and after this, come back with a memo or suggestion that we could give to the Budget Audit Committee to be incorporated in the deliberation on the Budget Audit Committee, and go from there.
IT, can you put it up on our main screen so we can see it on our, thank you so much.
Do we want to...
Yes, I think maybe it would be helpful for us to...
Run through them.
Kind of run through it a little bit.
Yes.
So on the left-hand side is the restorations and the associated costs. So at the top is Councilmember Vangs' proposal, and so you can see the restoration of youth and family services on an ongoing basis, the DEI position, the community center positions, and the fuel network allocation. And then on the right is the proposed ways to pay for it. So decreases to the police impact team, marine unit, the elimination of the CAO investigator position, and the associated services, and then the elimination of ShotSpotter. And down at the bottom, you can see the total of each. So roughly 2.2 in restorations funded with those 2.2 of additional reductions. Under that is Councilmember Dickinson's proposed restoration of the residential parking permit program, and then a number of position eliminations and other strategies to more than finance it.
Okay.
Oh, and just one thing to note, on the city attorney positions, they do have a lower level in there, so we did adjust for that, so you can see the adjusted total under there. And then if we scroll down, sorry, is Councilmember Gera's proposal. And so on the left, you see the fuel network, the DEI position. Oh, I'm sorry, but I can't read, because I don't like glasses. And the residential parking permit. And then to pay for it is the city attorney, one-year deletions, and eliminating the investigator, and then again, that... one-year deletions, and eliminating the investigator, and then again, that adjustment for the positions that are filled. And then on the bottom is Councilmember Kaplan's proposal. So along with a two-year budget cycle with six-month updates, it's the reductions included in staff's presentation, and the Neighborhood Resource Coordinator deletions, and removing the auditor survey. And that's all savings and no restorations.
Okay. I do have one question for you. So when you looked at Councilmember Dickinson's list, you said a number of positions. So are some of those positions, the same positions that were identified by councilmembers Gara, Kaplan, and/or Vang?
Yes, so the...
Right, most of them.
Some of them are in common. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, before we, clarification.
I just wanted to ask, not an option on the, going to the ARPA.
Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember. Yeah, so we, we actually swept those funds as part of our project sweep, and so we can't double count it. So I apologize. We shouldn't have had that on the list as an available, as an available strategy, but we swept it.
So you got to move that to the cost side, then, huh? At 120,000?
No, it just shouldn't be available as a balancing strategy.
Okay. So again, what I am looking for from councilmembers, if you can help me and city staff by, if you'd like, going over some of these individually or themes, and give us your, your input, one by one, and we'll keep score accordingly. And reconciling this and come back with a suggestion for the Budget Audit Committee deliberations on the third. Okay. First up, Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to everyone who still were here with us during this time. It's been, appreciate the process, and it's, sometimes democracy is messy, but this is important. So let me, I'd actually like to start with some questions, because I can't make decisions unless there's certain information that I have.
Fair enough.
So I, specifically maybe for the police chief, sorry, I know you're, as she comes up, just because I, I think that Councilmember Vang brought up a number of potential vacancies, and I'm, I'm really interested to know how those positions may or may not impact the actual operations. So while she comes up here, I will start also with a broad support for the $1.3 million for youth pop-ups. I do support that. I, I think, you know, assuming that, that Mezrel, that for the Children's Fund, we do pass the funding for the Del Paso Library, that, that I would support that. I also support Councilmember Gara's and Vang's request for the Fuel Network using the two positions. So I'll just put that out there. Hi, how are you?
If you're asking a question, I'll just walk you up to the bathroom.
Nope, okay.
Just waiting for you. Okay, so one of the, one of the positions, or I guess two of the positions mentioned are with the Marine Unit. Councilmember Vang mentioned that, that the Sheriff's Department has, I guess, a similar unit, unit that may cover the same area. Can you talk at all about those positions, if, if they're similar to the Sheriff's Department positions, and then, I don't know if you know this, but how long have they been vacant?
Our Marine Unit isn't vacant right now. We actually, those are filled positions. And so we, basically, obviously, there are a lot of waterways in the Sacramento area. The county will patrol from the airport down, and they have the whole delta. So we could follow up with the county and find out exactly when the hours are that they work and what their deployments are. But our Marine Unit is responsible for the waterways here in the city of Sacramento. So everything from Meadowview Pocket, all the way up through the American River and out to the county line. And I don't foresee the Sheriff's Department coming into the city to patrol those areas.
Okay. So those are all filled positions, permit?
Yes.
As of right now. Okay, perfect. That, that's good to know. The other positions, I think, are from the Impact Team. Are those currently vacant?
No, they are not. As a matter of fact, our Impact Team, we have 13 people that we have shifted to support the work of DCR, and they do all of the homeless enforcement and the outreach. And that's part of the IMT that we stood up. We actually started with a smaller team. I want to say it was about six people, and we've added the additional staffing to support DCR, and we work cooperatively with them.
That's helpful. And then my last question on PD is around ShotSpotter. I know, I've asked this before in the past, but when is, when is the date of that contract again ending?
It's coming up in June. It's going to be up for renewal. But of that contract, about $195,000 is funded with JAG funding. And so if that were to be reallocated, which it could be, it is limited with what we could do. It has to support certain frontline services.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for my, my questions for you. And then, and then on to the, the city attorney. I saw the investigator position is a, is a hot topic. Can you talk to me a little bit about what that impact of not filling that position would be for you?
Oh, sure, sure. So we had that position, we've had that for a long time. Actually, Sam Jackson created it when we took over criminal prosecution. And we had a retirement, but it was during COVID. And so I held off filling it just because it was during COVID, and we weren't doing a whole lot of court work anyways. And then we tried to recruit for it, and we're unable to. I tried to offer the position to the police department, but they couldn't make that work. And so I'm offering it up. You can just eliminate it because I don't foresee any real impact to us. There hasn't been over the last three years. We were trying to figure out a way to, you know, hopefully give to the police department. That didn't work out. So I would say that there's zero impact to our office if you take that position.
That's really helpful. Thank you. And then Councilmember Kaplan mentioned the Senior Deputy Attorney position. There's two of those. And it sounded like maybe there's also some difficulty hiring there. Is that the case?
So that was one thing that I was trying to clear up during the break. So we don't actually have five vacancies. I was trying to get that corrected in the documents in time for tonight. What we have are five underfilled positions. They're budgeted at the top senior level, but we aren't, it's very hard to recruit a lateral attorney, because lateral attorneys typically come from other cities, and they won't leave those jobs to come to us. There's a lot of reasons why. Every once in a while, we grab a Leslie Walker, for example, because, you know, she's looking to make a change and come in-house. So the, what I'm, what I had proposed was, since you are not funding my positions, excuse me, you're funding my positions at the top senior level, but I'm actually paying for junior lawyers. So I had proposed, why not just take that delta? And I think that's, the full amount is actually in your budget document that you had last week when you first...
That sounds like that's 300...
1,001, 1,002, something like that.
359,000? Okay.
Right. And so the only thing I, I had, you asked me the impact. The impact is this. Should a Leslie Walker walk in, and I have lots of Leslie Walkers, right?
Sorry.
But she's one that you all know. Senior lawyer happened to come to us, and as a result, we saved all sorts of work on secret litigation. I could not make them an offer right now, because if I'm only funded for junior deputies, I would not have the budget to make a offer at the top of the scale. And so that's why I appreciate Councilmember Gara's suggestion that he wouldn't completely deprive me of that ability to maintain some flexibility. But, but, you know, I offered it to the council, so.
Thank you. I really, that's very helpful for me. So, so with that, I want to reiterate that I, I support the DEI position, that shift from the investigator. Sounds like that, that is a great solution for that. It sounds like it would be challenging for you, but I, but I do think that I, I'm a strong supporter of the Fuel Network. I know many of us are, and I think we need to get creative to find ways that we're going to fund that, because it's more, it's important more now than ever with what we have going on federally and beyond. And so I do support that shift of funding, but want to recognize the, the sacrifice that you're, you're giving in your office, and hopefully we can correct that in future wonderful budget years. As it relates to some of the, the positions on, in PD, you know, I was very compelled by what you had to say, Councilmember Vang, but also I'm feeling like maybe I don't have all the information I need to, to give a real answer on this, because I'm hearing that a lot of these positions are actually filled. And so I, I guess what I need before, before making decisions on that would be answers from, from staff about what's actually filled, what's not, what's actually on the table. And then, of course, having that corresponding information about, like, what is the impact on the department, if any. And I, I'm just not prepared to do that right now. So that is, I think, all of the things that are on here. DEI, community center, youth, parking, oh, parking program, that's one that I missed. I, generally speaking, support the idea of eliminating a fee for residential parking. I think that, that, you know, that's going to cause a lot of issues for state workers. It's going to cause a lot of issues for residents in the downtown, the town area. But again, I, I'm going to need more information. I, I don't, you know, of all those positions that you outlined, I don't know which are actually doing what, and what department, and what that means. I think that's one of the challenges of doing the process, like, just like this tonight, especially as it relates to vacancies, is we don't, we really don't know that information until we get that from our staff. So I think identifying what those key positions are, that's that 961 or whatever offset, and then getting from the staff back before that June meeting, hey, this is what it actually means, will help me make a better decision. But for right now, I'm, I'm, I don't think I can do that. So that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. I, no cuts to the city treasurer's office or the city clerk's office. If you do the math, the 50, $75,000 that we save out of 6.8 billion will be like point 000, who knows how many zeros of a difference. So, no to that. I'm okay with the two city attorney positions going to the Fuel Network, then getting them back next year. And then the Fuel Network, I mean, hopefully applying for some of the state funding available. Parking permit fees, I'm okay with that.
Okay with what?
The parking permit fees, the revenue source.
You're okay with going, continuing with it?
Yep.
Okay.
And then no deleting any DCR positions. I mean, we literally just approved...
Yeah, can we go back? So you're okay with us charging people the parking fees, or going with what Dickinson says and getting rid of that item?
Charging the parking fees.
Okay, okay.
And then no to deleting any DCR positions or Impact Team. We literally just approved two different grant applications for tiny homes in our communities. And if we want to enforce the Good Neighbor Policy, we need to work DCR in conjunction with the Impact Team. It makes no sense that we're going to promise them that it's going to be Good Neighbor Policy and not give them the resources that they need to, to be successful. And then library funding, going to pop-ups if Mezrel goes well, and the library gets funded, I'm okay with.
Okay.
Done.
DEI position?
DEI position, that's fine.
Councilmember, Councilmember?
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you want to ask a question there?
So you want DEI on or off the list?
So you want to restore the proposed cuts to the DEI program?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay.
By the way, that's probably the most monotone you'll ever hear me.
Councilmember Vang.
Thank you. You know, I put those vacancies up there knowing that my colleagues might not touch it, but just wanted to try. I do have a question, because Chief Lester came up here, and we, you know, we asked a question if they're not vacant or they're full. So just some clearly clarity from the city, the city manager in particular. So in the budget item, we clearly list that these are vacant, but then Chief just said that it's filled. So can you just provide clarity on that? Because I think that's really important. Because if they're filled, then the budget that we propose, that we have out to the public, is inaccurate. Because, I mean, I see here, like, it's listed under the vacancies, it's under FTE vacant, right? And so I just, I want to, I think it's important for us to be clear to the public. Even if Chief says yes, what I'm saying is that what we have for the public is not accurate. And so as a city, perhaps we need to redo this, because if that position is filled, that's not what it says in our public documents. And so we need to make sure that's reflective. And so I'm just directing that. I mean, and it might not be Chief's fault, because she said it's filled, but it doesn't reflect what is on the budget document. And so if someone can address that, that'd be great.
I think I heard your question. We have filled positions, and you're wondering why. I'm not looking at the documents that you have, but they say vacant. Brenda, do you want to come up and talk about how we did that? We're talking about actually eliminating vacant positions to preserve those.
So Brenda Delgado, Public Safety Admin Manager. So the positions themselves are filled, but we would first cut two vacant positions. So the Marine Unit would go away, those services would go away, the two people that are in those spots would go elsewhere in the department.
Okay.
So that's why it's although the...
So, but, but what I, okay, so for me, it's not so much, like, what I, Roger's saying, he doesn't understand it at all. What I'm saying is that the budget document that's shared with the public is not the reality of what Chief just shared with us, which means that what we're sharing with the public is inaccurate. So if that position is filled, that needs to be reflective in the budget for the public. That's all I'm saying. So it's filled, that's great for me to know that it's filled, but according to the budget document, it said it is vacant. And so if that is not reflective of the realities on the ground, we need to be, be able to ensure that that's the information we're providing to the public.
Yeah. So just to clarify, what police is saying is, you know, there, there's appropriations associated with each position that we have budgeted. And one of the things that we tried to do during the budget process was produce these strategies, so you would understand the impacts of eliminating filled or vacant positions. What police is saying is, hey, you know, we have people operating in the Marine Unit, but we're not going, if we were to eliminate the Marine Unit, we're not going to, to fire all of those police officers because we have other vacancies. But it's that, that spending authority that allows them to use the overtime to staff all the service level that they're providing now. So what's, what it's saying here is, what position would you actually cut? And if you have a bunch of patrol vacancies, you're not going to fire your Marine Officers and then to still have patrol vacancies. You're going to move those Marine Officers to patrol.
Thanks, Pete. I know it is 11:01 right now, and I'm just going to say, that's not what I understand as a policymaker, looking at this budget document. And if I read it this way, I'm sure the public reads it differently. And so I'm just saying, like, this is not so much on Chief. This is actually on our city process in terms of the budget transparency. So I, I'm just naming that because we're not being accurate in our budget. Like, we're, what the public is seeing is not accurate for what you're sharing with me, what's happening on the ground. So I, we'll just end it there, because it's 1:01, but I just wanted to name that, so.
Okay.
Yes, this is, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Lucky Bond.
I'd support Eric's proposal for the Fuel Network, and I think if we look at Roger's list of cuts, avoid IT. At the very least, we can restore the residential parking permit program.
Concise. Yes. Okay. Councilmember Kaplan. We already know your ideas.
I, I have a hard time. All of these things we want to restore, I think are nice to have. None of them are in our city charter as mandatory regarding police, fire, sewer, water, garbage, and our parks. We are going to be making these cuts next year. Truly, honestly, part of what I'd hope we would think about is, I support and have always supported the Fuel Network, but everybody's experiencing some version of cuts. Maybe we only fund 75%, because these are all going to be on the chopping block again next year. The 1.3 in youth funds will be on the chopping block, and we already know we have at least a minimum of $55 million, and we have no HAP funding coming in. So that's an additional 12 to 13 million out of our general fund if we want to continue funding homeless services that, that we're not talking about. I think one of the things we're missing about the residential parking permit, and if I get it wrong, Public Works Director, Mr. Ironman, can, if we don't bring this money in, these are actually people and staff that are coming out of the fund that you have that more than likely, we won't be able to sustain. And they, like, explain to me, because the 961 isn't going to save any general fund money.
They're going to cover the existing cost.
So it'll allow you to keep staff?
It'll, it'll allow us to keep staff. And, I mean, even if we don't charge, we will still be able to keep staff, but you're going to shift money, right?
So can you explain what happens if we don't do this? If we don't have the residential parking permit program? Because we just raised a bunch of fees in the city, and we're all about cost recovery. So in reality, what I hear is the residential parking permit program is actually cost recovery to cover what your staff is spending time on.
So if essentially we don't charge for the parking, then the city is subsidizing the cost for the service.
Okay. So where, if, if we bring in that 961, can that money go into the general fund?
Yes.
How can that money go into the general fund? I thought it could only be used on parking services or...
It's not, that money's not restricted. Parking meter funds are restricted to operation of parking operations. That money that we would recover is not, is not restricted.
So let's say we eliminate the 961 this year. Where, how long can you sustain keeping staff that, that do this? What's in jeopardy?
Yeah, we, we can, we can pay for it out of our operating, but you're... Yeah, we can, we can pay for it out of our operating, but you're taking it from something else-
So what's not going to get funded, or what's not going to get fixed if we take the 961?
Something from the general fund, right?
Well, it's somewhat a false choice because potentially it could be covered through the suggestions that Councilmember Dickinson's proposing, so, but we hear you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I do not support the elimination of the residential parking program. You know, I think a majority of people have the ability, do have garages or apartment, parking spots, and $10 a month when you have this because you expect city code enforcement to come out and cite people and keep our streets in compliance, you know? The city and the residents sign up for that program, you know? So if they don't want that, maybe they should then remove and, so that the city is not supplementing this cost. But it then comes down to, this is, what would we rather fund and where would this fund go to? Because this is less money coming in that could potentially be funding fuel next year and other things that we have to think about. So, I, I can't support the increase of anything back in, although I do support the fire prevention fee revenue, treasure revenues, as well as the senior program fee reduction. On the youth violence prevention, we all know I'm there, but we got to have hard conversations because that funding won't be there next year either. It's one time, and we're not making hard choices with a long-term structural deficit. So, I hear you, I propose $2.5 million in cuts, even with adding in what you all have wanted to, it's, it's 3 million. If you add in youth violence prevention, fire prevention, senior production fee, Fuel Network, DEI, and the residential parking, that's 3 million in restorations. We haven't proposed 3 million in cuts. None of this makes sense. So, I think you all know I'm a no on, on everything except what I just said I would be okay on. So, I can't find myself to reconcile and be okay because we're now not balancing the budget, we're actually going backwards and creating a larger budget deficit.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, well, it's too late in the evening to be argumentative, but I just want to make the point that the residential parking fee is imposed on people not because of something they're getting, but because of something they're denied. The fact of the matter is, the only places that have residential parking programs are places that are impacted by people from outside the area coming and parking on the streets those people have in their neighborhoods. So, they are being, not only, they're not only losing the opportunity to park on their streets, now we're proposing to charge them for the privilege of losing it. That, to me, is fundamentally unfair, so.
Yes. Okay.
Over and out.
Thank you, yes. I, I'll come back to my take on the list here, but as someone who lives next to the UC Davis Med Center, where 16,000 people go on a daily basis, that's Exhibit A. You know, but for the permit program, there'd be no place to park for residents, and people who have to pay 150 bucks a month to park at the hospital would park in the neighborhoods. So, we're almost there, we're almost there. Councilmember Guerra.
Yeah, I'm sorry, in the vein of gripes again, I'm with, with Councilmember Dickinson here, right? And I guess this is where, on the, on the residential parking program, particularly in older neighborhoods, that, some of them don't even have driveways. I mean, you know, in the community of Elmhurst that were built at the time where they had horse carriages and they had back alleys that the city closed. So, it's not that they don't, it's not that, you know, that they don't want to park in their driveway, it's that they don't actually have a garage, you know? So, and they're being impacted. So I guess, and I guess the concern, the question that I have on this, and I don't want to belabor the point, but I want to dive in deeper on, on the actual cost of implementation. Is it costing us $1 million to have the parking enforcement drive around to ticket people? Is that, is that what we're, because, you know, we require everyone to show up once to register. We can even do it online now, they don't even have to come to the counter and the desk to participate in the program. Most of it's all virtual, and even then, now, my understanding is like, we record people's license plates, and so the sticker even is almost unnecessary anymore. So, can you talk to me about, like, how we get to $1 million for, maybe I'm just seeing residential parking in my council district that's affected by the UC Davis and Aggie Square parking, people who are, who don't want to pay for parking and they're parking in, in the neighborhood?
Sure, no, that's a great question, Councilmember. So, we have a breakdown of the costs that we spend for the residential permit parking program. So we're currently spending half a million dollars on our revenue division. They administer the program, they issue all the permits, they process all the applications, review to make sure that the DMV registration is accurate, that they have their proof of residency, and mail out those permits. So we have temporary permits, which are paper permits, physical permits that you can get in the office. We have visitor placards that are, a placard that can be used on any vehicle for your guests. And then we have the digital permits that are by license plate that's registered to the home. So, $500,000 going to our revenue division. We have $125,000 that we spend internally for our parking division, customer service, and our traffic investigations. Every time we get a phone call from a resident that says, hey, I'd like to have residential permit parking on my street, we have staff that are dedicated to respond to those types of requests. We also have our enforcement, so we spend about $200,000, I'm sorry, $100,000 annually for enforcement and our vehicles that go through and patrol all of those residential neighborhoods. Another $100,000 for our citation processing system. And then we have 311 and signage. So $200,000 annually spent to 311 to take all of the calls that come in for requests for service, requests for residential permit parking. So, it's $1,045,000 is what we're spending right now just to run the program.
Okay, and I appreciate you that breaking it down, and I'd actually like to get that full breakdown as well, because I'll tell you what my residents will say, and you're not collecting that from the parking tickets that you're issuing at that point. Now, I'm not saying that that's the case, but that's the response that at least folks are. So I'd like to actually, you know-
This actually does account for that, too. So, we, we accounted for residential, so the cost to enforce residential permit parking is actually a half a million dollars. We bring in about $400,000 annually in those residential citations, which, that's where we came up with the $100,000.
Offsets?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so here we are. So, just a perspective here. So, we're talking about $2 million roughly. We spent a couple hours out of a $800 million general fund budget and a $44 million deficit. So that means we're doing a pretty good job. We're almost there. We're almost making choices on the extremely difficult decision for the city budget to keep core services afloat. So, yeah, this is, this is painful, but I just know that, Lenny and I were just talking that 15 years ago, we were here till 2:00 in the morning laying off 100 police and firefighters. And that was brutal. So in perspective, we're keeping core city services as they are, and we're make, we're prioritizing some adjustments. So, I, I'll just run through some real quick, so you all know my positions for the record. I, as far as the, restoring the youth, youth services, I think we will do that through the, through the Measure L compact, so I think that's addressed. So the three remaining issues are the DEI position, the Fuel Network program, and the residential parking, parking program. And we need, you know, roughly a little over $1 million to do that, and it seems with the vacancies outlined by many of you, not-
Except for the PD.
Except for the, except for the, except for the PD positions, the positions. We'll have a path to do that. So what I'll do is hear from, I'm not sure if Mr. Jennings wants to speak up as well, but all of you have provided some input. If you still would like to do so, other than tonight, you certainly can, next couple of days, Councilmember, we'll go through these and come up with some recommendations, how we could restore those three things that were on the chopping block. The DEI position, the Fuel program at $500,000 for one year, as well as the residential permit program. And we'll provide that in a recommendation to the Budget Audit Committee and allow that to be deliberated on the 3rd with a potential action on the 10th. So, this was a messy sausage-making process, but here we are. Like chorizo, you said. Councilmember Jennings.
Yeah, so I'll give you what, what's on my sheet, which I'm very clear is that I don't want any cuts to public safety. I think I just need to go on record as saying that because I believe that a city that's not safe is not a city that people want to live in, so I don't believe in cuts to public safety. I am in full support of the Fuel Network and all the good that that does. I am in support of the pop-ups for youth and using Measure L money in order to be able to take care of that. And I'm in support of the parking residential program for what I know of that. I need to know a little bit more about that, but I can do that at a later time, but right now, I'm in support of it. I'm in support of, I wanted to know more about the shot spotter, because we didn't talk about that.
Yeah.
So we didn't ask the chief about the impact of potentially losing the shot, shot spotter?
Just to clarify, as far as those police positions that are recommended are not on the table anymore. There's nobody besides Councilmember Vang that put, foot those forward, so we can ask her, but those aren't really-
That's fine, if it's not on the table, then we don't need to bring her in to ask for that. Because that's why I was saying, I wanted to understand what the impact was to the police department, to lose that and to the safety of the city of Sacramento, so.
How about the DEI position?
Okay.
I'm in support of bringing that back.
Okay, the DEI position?
DEI position, DEI.
Yes, I see a Venn diagram with lots of commonality. So we're there. Thank you.
But I do support what Member Kaplan said, as far as we are putting a whole lot back on, we're not taking enough off. So we're not really cutting. We're going to be in the same situation this year and next year if we don't start cutting more back. And so I don't think any of us have done a great job of cutting as much as we need to cut.
So are you proposing to go along with Kaplan to do more cuts that are needed to fuel, DI, and residential parking?
Well, no, I'm looking at other areas that we need to potentially look at cuts.
Okay.
Because I've already said, I'm in favor of keeping those.
Okay. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to put on record that I support Councilwoman Kaplan's recommendation that we don't budget year to year, but we do a multi-year budget, and so just wanted to share my support for that, even if it's like a two-year budget, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we have ample feedback and direction for us to move forward. So there'll be no vote here tonight, and appreciate the respectful deliberation as well as the public participation. And that's all for this item, so next we have what, Madam Speaker?
So we have council comments, ideas, questions, and AB 123 reports. And then I have five speakers for public comment matters not on the agenda. Vice Mayor Kaplan? Oh, pardon, Vice Mayor Telemontes.
No, if we wait 40 more minutes, we can celebrate May 21st together. Come on, you're gone.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Oh, I just wanted to mention very quickly because it is, it is Memorial Day weekend, and there are a number of activities over the weekend. On Saturday at 10:00 AM at the Old City Cemetery, there is a ceremony honoring our veterans. There's on Sunday, the 25th Annual Reading of Names at the California Vietnam Veterans Memorial that goes all day. There's a ceremony at noon. And then on Monday at Sacramento Metro Memorial Auditorium, from 10:00 to noon, there is also a program to, to celebrate and honor our, our veterans for Memorial Day. So I wanted to make sure that we, we noted those occasions.
Thank you, Councilmember. I don't see any other council members signed up. City managers report?
Nope.
No city managers report. I have five speakers for public comment matters not on the agenda. T.O. Sessions, Seschems, Caveon, Miracle University, John Fiero, and Kian Bliss. I am seeing Mr. Bliss is the only speaker that remains.
We're probably the only person in the room that's not paid to be here. And, the reason I stay here in this is because I actually, for all your dislike of my attitude and my tone that I come up here to give to y'all on these important items, I actually give a shit about what happens in our community and how our resources are allocated in a fair and equitable manner. Because many of you know that there are a significant number of people in this city that are struggling right now under the current regime. They're facing cuts, their, like, the cost of living continues to increase while their wages are stagnating. Not just by corporate CEOs and businesses like Walmart and Amazon, but also even by local businesses. They too feeling the, like, feeling the squeeze. That's why it's important for them to be able to participate in a fair and participatory manner. And I didn't see that actually tonight. I saw you, Mayor, limit public comments to one minute because you valued efficiency and speed of time more than democracy, than basic participatory democracy. You all are paid to be here, and you're actually, and most of you are actually getting a raise this year despite $43 million in budget cuts. And the fact that you value your, like, value that time more than actually listening to your constituents says something about your values, truly. I would ask you to do better, but I've been frankly asking councils going back to 2016 to do better, and I still haven't seen it. When is that going to happen?
Thank you for your comments.
Time's up.
Mayor, I have no more items for you, you may adjourn.
Thank you. With that, we'll adjourn.